Like to call the meeting of the committee, the whole meeting, the municipality of Jasper of October thirteenth, twenty twenty to order. Are there any additions to the agenda today? Okay. That moves us to agenda item three, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve today's agenda submitted? Okay. Counselor Keller MP, all in favor? That's carried. I'm assuming that everyone's had time to read the minutes of September twenty twenty second, committee of the whole. Are there any adjustments, corrections, or deletions to be made to those minutes? Right? Having none, that moves us to item, agenda item number five, business arising from the minutes. Oh, sorry. Prior to that, thank you, Counselor Keller MP. Just trying to move us along, hey, maybe a little too fast. Having no adjustments to be made to the minutes, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty second, twenty twenty? Counselor McGrath moves that? All in favor? That's carried. Now we may go to business arising from the minutes. Does anyone have anything to discuss from business for minutes from the last meeting committee? Think I'm better engineered for those one thirty committee of the whole meetings in the afternoon. That worked out kind of well last time around. So anyway, for me. All right. So getting a few of those cobwebs out personally. We're at agenda item number six, policy and governance. Agenda item six point one, we've had that reoccurring on the agenda for quite some time now. Public health update and concerns. Is there any council discussion? Anyone want to bring anything up? Okay, that's great. You're either all really scared of me, or there's really nothing to talk about right now. Okay, agenda item six point two, council strategic priorities update for the twenty twenty to twenty twenty two business plan. Is there anything that any council would like to discuss regarding our strat plan today? No. Okay, so if we get a record time for a meeting today, I can't take credit for it. Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Not with respect to the strategic priorities, but include there is the reference to the twenty twenty two business plan. And just to put it on the table and not for discussion today, because it may take some lengthy discussion, and I don't want to have you deviate from your record to get us out of here on time. I just wonder whether we should reconsider calling these things business plans and perhaps call them service plans. Because we are not in the business of business, we're in the business of service. And so I, it's just terminology, but I would prefer that we look at service plans as opposed to business plans. I, I think there's a different meaning, but I just, I just put it out there for a later discussion. Because the opportunity seems to present itself.
Yeah, I really like that angle. I think it's worth pursuing a discussion on for sure. And because they're both really under the same agenda item, I did have one topic that I wanted to bring up, and that's our cultural, culture and rec services review. And I would like for us to, as a council, to find some deadline that we could put on our horizon to finalize that study. It's going on a bit long and, you know, obviously, there's some things that got in the way that we needed to take care of. So having said that, I'd like to, you know, have some idea of when we can set a target to have our consultants meet back with us after we've completed the last part of our revision. So if we can not here to set a date today, but definitely keep that on the radar for maybe the next committee of the whole to, to set a date. Does that make sense? Okay. Anything else to add to agenda item six point two? Counsel Butler.
I think we should set a date. Today. Where we have to deal with that, we've had a number of conversations about moving on with it. Let's set a date. If we don't set a target, we won't meet it. Two weeks from today. Commit ourselves to review the plan. I think we probably all need to sit down and remind ourselves of where we are. Gives us next week to have a conversation about what the next step would look like. At a minimum, we can talk about it two weeks from today, I would say.
Again, if the, if the group is available to go over with us, then are you setting, looking at a date to?
Well, I'm not saying that in particular. I don't know if we need the group back. I don't think we even know what our next step should be, but surely next week we could at least decide what the next step is, which might mean if we're having the consultants come back to talk to us, that could be a week later, and I doubt they would come. It could be by Zoom, so we could probably wrap it in a month, and I think that would be really valuable, because every week that goes by, we're closer to the deadline we set ourselves to complete the budget, and I think we've all at least at one point implicitly agreed, at least that we want to see the end of that study before we complete the budget. So.
Okay, so next week, the twentieth is our regular meeting, so you'd want to have something in place where we discuss what the next step is, and then have all our homework completed by the twenty seventh. Oh, Mr. Mayor.
I, I support Council Butler's suggestion that we get on with this and set a date, but two weeks hence is our organizational meeting, and I'm not sure that it necessarily fits in there, but with that consideration, I, I support getting this set down and concluded, certainly before we get into the substance of the budget. So sooner is better, but I'm not sure that two weeks from now will work, but I, if we can find a time in and around the organizational meeting. I'm fine with that, but I just don't think it's, it's a proper subject for the organizational meeting.
Go ahead, Counselors General.
Mr. Chair, through to Counsel General, that's the monthly sort of organizational health checkup, but that could include our latest change, or it could focus on this. It could be both, except to counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just want to clarify that there is a committee of the whole scheduled for nine thirty on the twenty seventh, and organizational meeting is to follow committee of the whole. So there is a, a meeting there as well.
Counsel McGrath.
I think it's a great idea that we see this next Tuesday morning along with organizational health on the morning of the twentieth at nine thirty AM.
Okay. So it be written, so it be done. Okay. See you next Tuesday morning. All right. Agenda item number seven, information items. Agenda item seven point one, municipal operating support transfer. Who would like to discuss that? Ms. Mallon Jack.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Council. So today I have an information report on the most funding, so it's municipal, municipal operating support transfer. So today, if council could review and consider it for information. And then next week at the October twentieth regular meeting, we'll be bringing back the MOA as part of a report for and signature on the MOA. So this is federal and provincial government funding for Canada, Alberta Safe Restart Agreement. So as to cover any incremental operating costs incurred due to the COVID nineteen for any response as well as restart. So it could be operating losses as well as deficits incurred. Incremental operating costs could include anything from protective equipment, communications, additional cleaning, supplemental staffing, and additional supports for vulnerable, vulnerable populations. And operating losses or deficits could include losses or deficits due to decrease in revenue. For instance, on recreation facility entrance fees, building permit fees, whatnot. So these funds must be incurred, or the expenses must be or losses incurred between April first of twenty twenty and March thirty first of twenty twenty one. There is no application process, but the MOA must be in place by October thirtieth, therefore why we are bringing it back on the October twentieth meeting for signature. And then the process is that I would have to do a statement of funding and expenditures by July second of twenty twenty one. So Jasper has been allocated three million, three hundred and sixty, one thousand, five hundred and sixty one dollars. So this is comprised of a general operating, operating component, a tourism component, and previously allocated MSI O, so operating funding that we knew we would be able to use towards the pandemic response. So that is quite an amount, and attached, you can see the official release of the funds and how it's broken down and how it's calculated. So general operating is per capita basis, the tourism component is based on the estimated share of daily visitors among the tourist towns of Banff, Cammore, and us, Jasper, and the MSI O component of the grants. And included as well, so that everyone could see it prior to coming back on the October twentieth meeting, is the memorandum of agreement to be signed, and that is it for the information that I have at the moment. I will be compiling information to be submitting and, and putting compiling all the information to make sure that this funding works out in our favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mallon Jack. Does anybody have anything to add to the discussion? Counsel McGrath?
Just wanted to thank administration for bringing this forward and to note to the public how, how really important this funding is and how this funding has specifically been noted for the tourism communities. It feels good to be recognized both on the provincial and the federal level from the higher levels of government to note that Jasper has been uniquely impacted from the COVID nineteen pandemic, and how wonderful this is to come through as our community has watched us pull money from reserves to reopen facilities and how meaningful and important this funding is. So thank you very much.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demote. I, I wanted just to echo some of the very words of, of Counsel McGrath. This is, of course, tremendously good news for our community, but it's also excellent news, as Counsel McGrath said, for our tourism industry, and it's, it's not just recognition of the importance of tourism and tourism communities to the provincial economy. It's also, I think, tangible evidence that our longstanding efforts to get recognition together with our friends in Banff and Cammore are perhaps paying off. It's also, I think, evidence of the benefit of the work that Tourism Jasper did in scheduling and hosting Tourism Roundtable with the premier locally in early August. I think that that meeting now can be seen in, in retrospect to have been really beneficial for our community, and at the same time, I think it, it points to the efforts of our own MLA, Martin Long. I don't know the, the backstory entirely, and I'm sure I never will, but this recognition for, for tourism communities, in particular in the province, was undoubtedly discussed with caucus, and we did well, and I, I think that Martin Long deserves some credit for that, and I'm not sure if it's coincidentally, but concurrently, it's important to note that he has now been appointed as Parliamentary Secretary for Small Business and Tourism, which is a credit to the work that he's been doing on our behalf, I think, and also a great personal credit to him. So I think there are a number of items that all combine in this announcement that position our industry and our tourism community in a much better spot than it was recently. So I, I joined with Counsel McGrath in thanking administration for bringing this forward, but I extend my thanks to our MLA, to Tourism Jasper, to the premier, and to our colleagues in Banff and Cammore, because there's been a lot of effort to get us to this point, but we now see some results. It's, it's really exciting news.
I echo that, and, and I couldn't have said it better. You know, and I, I'd like to thank a lot of the, some of the work from prior councils, the people that sat on that, as well as our administrative support. I know that Mark, along with support from our staff, has worked with the CAOs of, of other townships to, to have several meetings over the years, and I think that all of that influence has been beneficial, and, and I do take my hat off to our MLA, Mr. Long, and, and carrying that torch forward for all of us. So kudos to him. Mr. Butler. Counselor Butler.
Thank you very much. The advantage to waiting is that you don't have to say everything you were going to say that somebody else has already said, so I echo all of those sentiments. I actually have a couple of questions. The final bullet on the first page, I just don't understand what that means. So if you could explain that for me, and then I have a second question.
Sorry, I'm looking at that and thinking that I may have made an error on that one. Just one second, please. Yes, I'm that I was working on two reports at the same time, and that's for the MSP. I apologize.
No problem. Struck duly stricken. So my first reaction when I read through the fine print on this was the challenge in qualifying for the full amount, and I'm just wondering if there are any preliminary estimates you can offer, this Mallon Chuck, or, or where we are in that process. I suppose what I'm looking for is assurance of what I'm pretty certain of is that we are pulling out all the stops and doing everything possible to make sure that we can qualify for the full amount of funding, because three point six million dollars is a really big number, but we have to, of course, qualify for all of that funding, and I wonder if you have any additional thoughts or early thoughts on that? And if the answer is, we're not there yet, that's fine, just wondering.
Mr. Chair, through to Counselor Butler. I've been very busy with other things at the moment, and that is my next focus. But, so I can't comment on it at the moment. We will be bringing it back with more reports as, as it proceeds through everything that I need to do to compile all the information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel Butler. Keep tripping that up, maybe because I have such high regard for you. I just want to call you Mister. Ms. Mallon Chuck, in regards to this overall funding is for community clarification, how does this impact our current tax requisition and operation funding as far as what we've already, you know, decided on? And how will that impact our budget and tax requisition for twenty twenty one?
Again, that is some information that I'll have to work on putting together. It is definitely in the back of my mind. It's just the next step to what I'm doing, but I will be able to provide more information as we go along.
I apologize if I was repeating some.
Thank you.
Great. I have to apologize. Even when I turn my chair, this ends up being my weak side, so if I don't see your hands go up, if you could collectively help signal me, that'd be great. So all right, if we're finished with agenda seven point one, thank you for that information. Seven point two, investing in Canada's infrastructure program, ICIP update. Ms. Mallon Chuck, I believe that's you as well.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, through to council. This report came to council on September first, and it's basically the same report, except that on September first, it was requested that a full listing of projects be submitted to show how or what was applied for. So in the end, the, the whole amount was nine point two million, and then what I've attached is the I'm sorry, you'll have to scroll down. If you go down to page nineteen, I believe it is, there is the twenty twenty ICIP project listing. So in twenty twenty, those two projects were part of the approved budget, capital budget. And you can see the breakdown of how the funding works, and then there's twenty twenty one IC, ICIP project listings. So because of the pandemic, there was a lot of shifting and moving things around, and what we did is moved the, some of the twenty twenty projects to twenty twenty one for further discussion for approval in twenty twenty one year. So you can see that any of the, the bold highlighted projects are the ones that were moved in the discussions surrounding pandemic, and then the, the ones that are not bold are a part that of the budget that was submitted in two thousand and nineteen as part of the five-year plan. And then in twenty twenty two, there was also one other listing for the LED lighting. So all of that is put together to make the nine, nearly nine point two million dollars, and then you can see that there is a split of, of how it was funded, and it had to be through grant matching. So there was the MSI C portion, which is just over three million. There was the donation from the Curling Club that was just under three hundred thousand. There's the ICIP portion, which is a federal portion, which is forty percent, and then the municipal contribution, which had to be thirty three point three percent. And then also included on that sheet is a legend to explain what some of the abbreviations mean within listings. So that's how it was applied for in the whole process, which started a long time ago. Thank you.
Well, congratulations to all your hard work, and I think that getting that funding is such a huge huge benefit to us, and it was able to leverage more than sixty percent of our required funding to get all the things that we would like and need for those facilities. Counsel Butler.
Thank you, and thank you to administration for all the work that went into putting together all the pieces to apply for this grant. I have some questions. On the first page, July twenty fifth, two thousand and eighteen, it says, the funds must be reported by November fourteenth, twenty twenty. So I don't understand what it means that the funds must be reported. Could you clarify that?
Yes, that is for the CFAP grant itself. So the, the Jasper Curling Club will have to inform the CFAP grant, grant on the amount that they're donating to the municipality, and that's the portion going towards curling rink slab.
All right, thank you. You mentioned that this was in the works for a long time, Mrs. Mallon Chuck, and was this report the first time that this was brought to council? Because I, I confess, my memory fails me, but I don't remember council being aware that we were in the process of, of applying for these grants.
I would have to jog my memory, because it is going back to two thousand and eighteen. I can't remember what I did yesterday. But I know that there was conversations surrounding it, around it, and that it was part of the business plan presented in the twenty nineteen year going forward. Excuse me, it was listed as one of the grant application possibilities, and it was listed as either the project would be covered by the ICIP funding or through debenture. So that's some of the discussion, and I would have to look back to see if I brought it up in any of my finance reports, but that's most likely where I'd bring it up is in those, in those monthly or monthly reports that I usually bring through.
Thank you, and fair enough. I don't need a further answer, because I, I do remember, while I do realize that when we're looking at budget, that is quite common to see a request for the full amount for a given project with the understanding that there is always a possibility that grant money could be, come up with. So my question then is the ICIP program is very broad, a number of streams, culture and recreation is one of them. So my question is, how was the decision made, and at what point was a decision made that the focus for this application would be upgrades to our recreation facility and not, for example, some other areas which were fundable, such as what comes to my mind is wastewater treatment plant? And I'm wondering where that sort of strategic decision was made, and at what point, and with what rationale?
I will have to go back in my memory bank on that one as well. Sorry, I can't answer that right now.
Fair enough. Thanks. I have one more, just. Yeah. So my last question is, when we spoke, when this first came through, it's true council asked for report as to what projects would be included in that list is very complete on the second page of this report. But what I'm still not really certain of is which of these projects administration considers to have been approved by council and which not, and I will say that. which of these projects administration considers to have been approved by council and which not. And I will say that I run into concerns with a piece that is a very substantial portion of this, the universal inaccessible change rooms relating to the rink to the arena. That came to us as a request for the 2020 capital budget. And we did not approve it. So where does that leave us where we have a substantial unapproved project sitting on the books for this grant?
It wasn't part of the 2020, it was part of the 2021. And it, we did not get into detailed conversations surrounding the 2021 budget. We usually as in the past have just gone over the next year for time or strains. Excuse me. Constraints. So it was part of the 2021. It's not bold, so it was on the 2021 list. Now, when applying for this grant, that was one of the things, the criteria that was going to be huge in getting the grant approval. It really was one of the parts that they they liked about the accessibility. There is a big focus on that in the in the application process. So that was one reason now. That being said, I have to move ahead and look at our our projects going forward and try to make the best with applications for grants and and secure money for our town. Otherwise, we would be without this funding. So that is where we stood in going through this process.
And I I'm sorry, I did not mean to put you on the defensive. I take that you're correcting me that it is not the case that we didn't approve it. I know we had some conversations about it. We had some lengthy conversations. But you're suggesting that it actually is part of the 2021 budget. So it is not unapproved. It is simply not yet dealt with. And that was really where I was, what I was trying to clarify and certainly not sound critical of your your department's efforts to go out and get funding. So those are all my questions, and I honestly did not mean to put anyone on the defensive with that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, both of you. Mr. Virtue, we'd like to add something.
Just Mr. Chair, this kind of conversation is fairly common in the world of finance that some of the grant funding time horizons are multi-year, and we have to plan to apply years in advance. And sometimes that takes time to get the grant funding, to get the grant funding towards the municipality, and that doesn't always jive with the annual budget cycle or the approval of project cycles within municipal government. So we have to make it work in between that like this. This conversation is quite common in my many years in local government. I can tell you how many times this has come up that administration will work on a five year capital plan, looking out the next few years and start working on those grant applications a few years ahead. But the conversation comes back to this table when the actual expenditure occurs. What does council approve or not approve is certainly a decision point and or making decisions on grant funding where it requires a resolution to council to apply. But other than that, it's just a regular course of business that a lot of these grant funding streams, we have to be looking at out a year or two and take advantage of what we have in the five year capital plan and apply. That's just how the system works. But this this then the more finite detail of what fits when in the timelines, it never really jives perfectly. It's a conversation that's come up many times dealing with FCM and AUMA, working with the provincial and federal governments to better align their grant funding programs with municipal cycles. They're out of sync. It's just something we have to work with.
Thank you very much for that background. And I do recall having some conversations on this funding potentially being made available. We didn't know to what extent, what amounts, and when it would kick in if we got it. Starting a long time ago and a few times when we did discuss bringing this forward, it was announced to us that there could be some potential funding coming our way, but we just didn't know to to what degree. So I do remember having that brought forward under that particular designation. And so having said that, I don't have a specific recollection, but I wasn't surprised when this came forward. So I am grateful. I know sometimes people in the community ask, why do you go out and try to find funding so that you can spend money to get funding? And sometimes it's like you have to for future projects to get completed, you have to look at spending some money to get the funding dollars and and if it's going to help out our community as a whole down the the long run, those are some of the efforts that everyone's collectively doing here. And hopefully, when we go to roll all these out, that they don't change too much. And if some things come up that do take priority, that we'll we'll take a hard look at it. But I appreciate the documentation that we have here with with all the items, and I look forward to getting some of these goals completed. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora. Mr. Virtue through you to Mrs. Malincheck during the the introduction of of this agenda item. I perhaps misheard, but when you were talking about percentages, I thought I heard a percentage that is higher than what I think it is. And for the benefit of anybody that might be listening and not reading the same material, can you confirm the percentage municipal contribution to this overall funding package?
Yes, I'm going back, and I remember saying thirty three point three. It was twenty six point seven percent, I believe. Yes, thanks for correcting me on that. It was thirty three for the MSI portion. Yes, thank you.
So so our contribution to this overall funding is just under twenty seven percent.
Correct.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So I did make reference to it. So I was saying over sixty percent. And I was hoping that I was right. All right. Any more conversation on the ICP ICIP update? Okay, that moves us to some more stimulus. As stimulating as this meeting is today, MSP Municipal Stimulus Program update. Are you on the hot seat again, Ms. Malincheck? Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the municipal stimulus program. We're bringing this forward so that council can review and consider the information presented on this report as well as we are bringing it back on October 20th as for signature. And the MOA is also attached to this report. They've kind of rolled in at the same time. And we want to ensure that they have their signatures so that we can get them sent off. The government of Alberta is providing additional capital infrastructure funding to municipalities. So this one is following the MSI guidelines mostly. And so some examples of projects that could be applied for would be roads. We don't have any bridges, water, wastewater systems, public transit, which we don't do as well. Health and welfare, as well as recreation and libraries. So what is part of this is that projects would not go ahead this year or next year in the absence of support through the MSP program. This was looked at by myself and Mr. Greathead in an attempt to see what we thought might not be able to go forward in the process of talking about the budget and whatnot. And sorry, the amount that was approved was five hundred and forty five thousand, six hundred and some. And my computer just froze. And the the amounts that we've applied the project towards, there's two projects that we've applied for, and that is for the, thank you, for the S Block Sandy Dump as well as the eight hundred block of Geeky Street between Larch and Pine, which is drastically getting pretty worn through in some spots. So that one is portion of that that would be allocated. So that has been applied for, and all that needs to be done now is the signatures on the MOA going through. Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you, Mrs. Malincheck. Does anyone have any inquiries? Ms. Keller, Counselor Keller-Hampe.
Once this funding goes through, these two projects, when will they be started and completed?
Through the chair to Counselor Keller-Hampe. We believe that if we are successful with this funding, we can get the engineer drawn up for the Sandy Block or the Sandy Dump and S Block. That was part of the plan when we designed the commercial parking lot there. So it would be adjacent to it, and we would be relocating it from the intersection where it's currently sitting. And we believe that that work could be done by fall of next year, and same with the paving on Geeky Street.
Go ahead. Yeah.
I know this is not on MSI, but just that we're on that sandy dump. This winter, what's the provisions? Because the one down near Alpine Village will be closed by Parks Canada. And we do have a lot of bus operators and a lot of motorhomes within Ventura for tourism, which will be open. Will the one that's in S Dock that's currently closed be reopened?
Through the chair, we're not planning on it. It's been closed since April of nineteen. We had a structural failure in the pipes. The pipes have collapsed to dig down there. We're looking at, I would estimate at least a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to fix that up. The money just wasn't there. So that's why it's been kind of held off, and the existing one would never meet Alberta Health Services approval. There's no cleanup facility or any of that. So it's been inherent with problems. Last year, we did get quite a bit of pushback around this time of year, saying that we had to have it open, but there was no way we could afford to fix it. And by the time the winter hit, we never had any complaints. I think it was a lot of concern building up and looking at the winter and looking for options. But really, it didn't cause any noticeable pain for operations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keller-Hampe. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora. Mr. Virtue through you to staff generally, I suppose, but primarily Mrs. Malincheck. I don't expect and certainly don't require any answer today, but I'm I'm mystified by the parameters that seem to have been set for this funding. The indication in the report is that this is capital infrastructure funding. The uses, though, include reducing municipal red tape to promote job creating private sector investment. I don't know exactly how you could possibly do that through capital infrastructure spending. And then the the bullet points on project eligibility are not in any sense related to regulatory red tape. And yet, there's a clear indication that somehow this money might be used to reduce red tape. I don't think you do that by building roads and bridges, but that seems to be the indication. So I wonder, and I appreciate there may be an absence of clarity in in the source of this information, but might some of this money be used to assist our efforts in gaining control of land use, planning and development? Because that is connected to red tape. We might be able to spur some private sector investment in this community if we had a more manageable development process. And but it's not a capital project in the in the normal sense. So I I appreciate that you have repeated to us the information that you've received from the province, but I cannot make a connection between capital infrastructure spending and red tape reduction. So if if over time, you could look into that, if you have the time, appreciating how busy you are, I would like to know whether there are some really innovative and creative uses of that money.
Ms. Haddall, and then Counselor Butler. I mean, you have some information to follow up on his on the mayor's inquiries.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora through Mayor Ireland. The I assisted Mr. Greathead and Mrs. Malincheck in submitting this grant application because some some portions of it were very hard to encapsulate in wording how our projects would meet the criteria and my understanding of taking concrete actions to reduce red tape. Part of the application was that we could be eligible for funding, receive funding, and then by a certain time next year in the spring next year, we have to commit to submitting a document that outlines what the municipality has done to reduce red tape, regardless of what the capital projects applied for were. So that's how the the detail of the application sort of addressed the red tape production. And we've, we came up with specific initiatives that occurred this summer. So the temporary sidewalk seating extension, for example, was a a red tape reduction to allow businesses to take immediate action to to improve their situation and things like that. So even though that red tape reduction is not directly related to capital projects, there is a different reporting system that the province is asking for. And enhancing provincial competitiveness and productivity, I think, is what we focused on most as in we're a tourism community, that the community is the product. Therefore, we need roads that are becoming of the international tourism destination that we are, is how we couch that in the funding application. So sometimes we have to get a little creative around those. But what you've identified is exactly the challenge we had internally is how do those capital allocations support red tape reduction? Is a hard connection to make for us specifically because that was my first thought as well. We don't have land use, planning and development. Therefore, it's pretty difficult to reduce red tape on that level.
Thank you for that.
Counselor Butler, then Counselor McGrath.
Thank you. I have two questions. On the first page of the RFD, the last bullet, the very last sentence says these must be funded through means. I don't understand what that means. Sorry, Deputy Mayor through to Mrs. Malincheck. I'm forgetting our protocols.
Again, an error on my part. I apologize. I obviously started to write something and got distracted.
No problem at all. That was the answer I hoped for. So my other question is, I guess, preferably related to Mayor Ireland's question where he posited that there could be potentially other uses for this money. And I had the question where you've bulleted projects submitted. Has that application been made? And you already answered that it has. My question is around the dump station, the Sandy Dump Station. I thought we were having a conversation about whether that's a project we should do relative to our responsibilities versus Parks Canada's responsibilities. Parks Canada has been running their Sandy Dump Station for many years. Now they've decided they're not going to run it in the winter. How is this not just taking our money and use it to plug a hole created by Parks Canada? Where I thought there was a conversation to be had about whether, in fact, that was a priority that we would identify as a community. that we would identify as a community.
I don't have the answer for that. I don't know if, no. If you have any additions to that, no. It's degraded.
Mr. Chair, to respond to Counselor Butler. Actually, when we did get this notification, we had about, I would say, 10 days to come up with a plan on our application and how we would get that done. There was a significant push from Parks Canada to ensure that our Sandy Dump was open. Administration has pushed back and said, like, you know, it's something that doesn't really fit. But when we were looking at it, we did have a plan to have the S Block Sandy Dump built with that parking lot. The cost was just getting exceedingly high on that project. And also holistically, I was thinking that were we to apply for the Sandy Dump, we could remove the existing one that is there in S Block. Realign that intersection and do something better with the waste transfer setup that we have there. So we do have a lot of the recycling bins and that actually gets used quite a bit more than the waste transfer station or the bins in the setup we have at the museum. So again, it was a quick turnaround on, you know, how we apply for this budget and how we apply for this money. And that's how we ended up with that.
Yeah, and I think there might even be some better red tape arguments in even just discussing that. But some of the questions I, oh, sorry, Counselor McGrath, you had your hand up first. And I have some thoughts, but I'll wait until you're done. I promised you first.
I'm happy if you speak first, but thank you. I just wanted to weigh into that discussion and being that we don't have an intergovernmental meeting scheduled until January, I'm wondering if our CAO or our mayor could be tasked with communication with Mr. Fair and have some work being done on this before January happens or call a special meeting of intergovernmental as it is a concern and it has been raised by local businesses and operators. And we simply just don't have a tool before January to work on this unless administration or our mayor can think of a tool that they have available to them to work on this. But in relation to the red tape reduction item, I agree with Mayor Ireland. It's, you know, looking at capital funding in relation to red tape production is tricky. And I can think of many uses operationally that we could use. I think our business licensing process within our organization could use some red tape reduction. And I think that the sidewalk seating is a great example of red tape reduction and how we can work as a municipality to make things easier for the businesses and the private sector. I don't have any ideas on how we could do that, but I agree with the sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Jono.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your comment, Mr. Greathead, about something to the effect that Parks Canada was anxious to find out when we're going to develop the Sandy Dump. Something or work on it or improve it or whatever. I find that a bit, well, annoying because they close theirs down, then they tell us, when are you going to have yours ready? That's red tape reduction in some way, isn't it? I am just, I mean, I just don't like the way they wedged us in to that project, period. That's all I have.
Mr. Virtue, you'd like to follow up?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is just back to, like, I guess, my previous comment. You know, administration needs to work from something that looks into the future as we deal with these day-to-day demands. And it's that multi-year capital budget that we come back to. And the Sandy Dump was in the multi-year capital budget and almost approved, simply not approved due to lack of funding for this year. If there's other reasons for projects not being on that list, we, I think we might need to put a priority to work with council that the multi-year capital budget list does not contain any projects that council wouldn't see done in the future to avoid that kind of a discussion, I think, would be healthy. Otherwise, as we look out to capital projects that we can and can fund as these funds come available, they're a few years from now or in these short term, kind of make a decision tomorrow because you need to sign something. The only thing that we can work on is the document we agreed on with council, and that's the multi-year capital budget. So outside of that, if there's other discomforts, I think those items should not be on that list. And that's probably a discussion we should have with council going into this budget cycle.
Those are good points, Mr. Virtue. Thank you. I'm just wondering what, I thought I remember the total cost of moving that and setting it up where the new desired location is for the Sandy Dump costing a lot more than the five and change that we have as far as the request for funding goes. And is that correct? Is that all that is going to get allocated from that funding request?
I believe that the total project of the S Block parking lot, including the Sandy Dump, was quite a bit, quite a bit higher. Having said that, I'm confident with this number. We've compared with a few other communities that have recently put them in. A community of Wildwood has just installed a new one, I believe. And some of our numbers were based from that. And so now that the bulk of the project for the S Block parking lot is complete, this is just a simple tie-in and an add-on. So it would go a little further to the west of the lot as it sits now. And it would be, the plan is just similar to what was presented to council when we first started looking at the S Block parking lot, where it would be an island, two lanes and multiple spots for vehicles and buses.
But I like the foresight and the thought behind that. And I was just thinking, too, if dollars and credibility, we can't do anything now because the funding's already been requested and all that documentation's been done. So I was merely looking at if the most funding, when we got some addition for tourism funding dollars, that definitely fits in regardless if it's capital or operational. That is something that is, we heavily, it's heavily relied on because of our tourism industry. And moving forward with that, I'd like this to maybe come on to maybe one of council's lists down the road when we're arguing the discussion for our validity of paying land rent. And Parks Canada doesn't recognize that, you know, the campgrounds and the people visiting the campgrounds and passing through the community are going to be accessing this. And it's part of their marketing that draws those tourists here as well as ours that we should have some assistance in those. And it's not, not to just fall under the land use, planning and development, but the justification for charging us land rent for helping us facilitate the, facilitate as a hub within the national park. So I think that there's a strong argument and I'm sure that we could quickly develop a very long list on things that we do collectively that benefits tourists and not have any reciprocation from Parks Canada as an agency here that is involved in tourism. So I think we should definitely have that as part of a discussion down the road for strategic planning, maybe not on this council, but pass forward to the next council if any of us continue on. That would be something that should be highly considered. But if that does fail, could there be any wiggle room in the most funding that we've got within the 3.3 million? Or has that been all allocated already?
It has not all been allocated. I still have to work on it, so I will keep that in mind. Thank you.
Yeah, just to, I'd want to set any, give any direction. But if we're going to, if we're looking for projects to, that fall under there or some, I know that's supposed to help us out from our losses during COVID, but I'm sure that could fit in somewhere because we did get additional tourism dollars for infrastructure. So that could be something that falls under there, falls, fails. Okay, anything else to add to the conversation? Okay, thank you for the update and background information on that. And I look forward to hearing more about it. That brings us to agenda item 7.4, Commercial Cardboard Engagement Process. Who would like to start with that? Mr. Greathead, Ms. Nidon, Mr. Virtue? Me, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll start. Ms. Nidon has been working to set up a meeting with Chamber of Commerce as discussed during our evening meeting, our town hall. I believe that's going through later on this week, isn't it? I believe the following week, okay. So we're still waiting on getting that sit down and having that discussion. But I will notice that, or would like to note that as we've been putting a little bit of pressure on this, we've seen quite a bit of improvement. And, you know, I'd like to say thank you to the, to the businesses and the managers that are making the difference. But having said that, as you try and make a change, you notice all the problems that come up. And so we're looking at how to deal with that. We've noticed that a lot of the businesses don't actually have any allocated spots for their own commercial cardboard. And they're using other neighboring businesses. So that's something that we're going to have to work on. And as we're dealing with the complaints and the issues that are arising, myself, Ms. Nidon and Mr. Jones and Laurent, we're all kind of in contact, bouncing these problems off of each other and looking for a better solution. So I believe that we'll have something pretty decent in front of council within about three weeks to go forward and say, this is, this is the path that we'd actually really endorse and like to follow.
Ms. Nidon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota and Mr. Greathead. So we had the town hall about three weeks ago, two weeks ago. And we had some interested businesses there. And the suggestion actually came from a business owner who was participating that a committee, because everyone loves making decisions by committee, could be struck to continue developing the idea and figuring, figuring out what would work for the business community. And the Chamber of Commerce expressed interest in doing that. And part of their executive also wants to be involved. And we've sort of been, we've been a bit delayed in hosting that meeting. But part of the reason this is here today before council is first to check in with council as these decisions will be made ultimately have budget implications and be made by council. And before we schedule that meeting, so we threw a date out there. But the part of the reason this item is here today is to check in with council and request representation essentially on that meeting from a counselor. And we've sort of had preliminary discussions around that last week. And there is an environmental responsibility item on our list of boards and committees. Mind you, that committee is not active. We felt like that was probably, there are two counselors assigned to that position already. And one of those two or both, if you wish to attend. So currently, we have Counselor McGrath and Deputy Mayor Demota assigned to those. And if that's amenable to council, the invitation could be extended to you as well. And to be sure that we find a date and a time that works for everyone. And that would be the way to connect with the chamber executive, the business community staff in that format to develop a proposal that could come back to council for budget consideration.
Well, I don't know how comfortable I am representing a not-yet committee as a committee member or representative of that. So I, again, a lot of things got in the way. And I don't want to keep blaming COVID for anything, but we did have a plan to get that committee set up and going. And we've had a lot to tackle. But if there's some sort of terms of reference that we could loosely start with to hopefully get going so that when we, I got you, that we can get going by our next organizational meeting, that would be great. If I have to draw them up and find them from somewhere else, I would. Because I really understand that you and finance are doing a lot of work these days. And we're, we're going through a transition with our town manager, our CAO. So there's a lot going on and I don't want to add more to everyone's workload. If there's a quick, simple way removing some red tape that we could at least get into some loose groundwork on getting in terms of reference or whatever the minimum is needed to just have a physical committee, then Counselor McGrath and I don't want to speak on it perhaps, but I'd be willing to work with her to get some stuff rolling and then, and get some representation where we need it. And if it's okay with council and we go just representing council as a committee, then I'd be happy to do that. I've been passionate about this conversation and I think we're moving in a positive direction. And even if it ends up being that we will no longer provide that service, I like the fact that we're working with businesses and trying to solve some solutions. And maybe we might find something that works for everybody. So that's the goal. And I'd be very happy to represent that if, from a council perspective, if it's okay with everyone else. Sorry for rambling, I just had to get that out. Counselor McGrath, you wanted to speak to that?
I'm very happy to be involved in the combined efforts to work towards a commercial cardboard solution. And I'm happy to be involved in whatever meetings that requires to get that done.
Counselor Butler.
We've begun an exercise of delving into various service levels and the various services in the community, the costs of those services. I don't think there's any of us around the table that don't respect that we have to find ways to save money. Sometimes that involves reducing service levels. I think that, and this comment is directed entirely to mayor and council, I regret that we ever got into the business of collecting commercial cardboard. I understand completely that it was done with nothing but the very best intentions. But I don't think we should be in the business of cardboard collection. I think we should be in the business of cardboard drop-off, however we want to word it. I think we have to make sure that we provide reasonably convenient places for community members, including businesses, to drop off cardboard because we don't want it in the waste stream. But I think we should suspend, get out of the business of collecting commercial cardboard. I think that's the decision we should make and we should communicate that whatever solutions are found, it will be within that context. And I think the sooner we do that, the easier the ensuing conversations will be. Thank you.
Well, it's definitely worth a conversation. And, you know, just observing the amount of work that goes behind the collection and freeing up some of that time for municipal staff to be working on other things is definitely something to consider. But at the same time, you know, I understand where you're coming from, Counselor Butler, in the sense that if we're going to continue this, it's not going to be at a loss. So whatever discussions come about, if business and the rest of the community don't want to contribute to what it costs to run it, then we can't run it at a loss. So we'll have to, we'll have to find another way to do it. And if that means a drop-off or some other type of process, I'm just excited that we're engaging people. And as much as we didn't get a lot of participation in the town hall, it was really good to get our feet wet that way. And I commend everyone in the process for starting that. And I look forward to doing more things like that in the community. And there may have been a perception that I was against having the town hall. I just got caught by surprise on it and I didn't want to make a big deal out of it. But I think that it was really good. I'm almost glad that there wasn't a lot of participation in the sense that it was great to get a lot of those. I'm using the term again, cobwebs out, but I think we're going to be stronger for the next one. So kudos to all of you for putting that together and including the chamber. Ms. Nidon.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. When we first headed out with this directive from council to engage on on commercial cardboard and possible options for the future. It was on the heels of some legislative steps that would enable us to issue warnings and potentially tickets. And that's, I believe, what Mr. Greathead was referring to, that we've, we haven't issued tickets, but we have certainly worked with some of the businesses that where there were issues and uncovered a bunch more issues, of course. But there has been some improvement in in some areas where warnings were issued and that's, that's the way we got better compliance. Having that said, heading into the engagement process, we left here with the directive that anything but status quo was the was on the table and that's the approach we've taken to engagement. And that was very much the tone of the the engagement session, the virtual town hall that we held. Changing that directive at this moment in as this engagement process is still unfolding is is a bit challenging and or direction overall from council is is what we work off of and appreciating the comments and the position of of Counselor Butler. Maybe it would preempt the outcomes of what this engagement process may yield if if we go in there and say, we're not going to be collecting. That decision hasn't been made by council as a whole is how how we've been interpreting the process so far. Getting together with those businesses, having a few counselors as representatives of council and not necessarily representatives of a particular committee. To Deputy Mayor Demota's point, doesn't have terms of reference or doesn't formally exist. I think what we're looking for right now is engagement on this commercial cardboard initiative only as maybe a stepping stone towards a a full fledged committee that has terms of reference. So what we're looking for today is whether extending an invitation to Deputy Mayor Demota and Counselor McGrath is appropriate in this context. And the last piece I want to bring forward is around the committee itself or leading into those organizational meeting discussions. We are happy to work on on whatever council may deem appropriate on that front and prioritize developing terms of reference for one committee or another. I have to thank council personally for putting a big light at the end of my tunnel. As in, I have a staff member coming and I'm hoping that this allows me to spend a bit more time working on things that will have a direct impact on how council does business and that includes continuing the conversation on boards and committees. So so getting terms of reference drafted up for an environmental responsibility committee, if that's the direction of council, we're, we're happy to oblige. But the immediate need that we're looking for is for council representation on a specific commercial cardboard. And it's one meeting is what we're talking about at this point.
Okay, so if if I can get just a nod from the rest of council, if they're okay with that request and unless someone else would like to be present at that, I am going to hopefully request to be on that committee and going forward after our organizational meeting and I'm just making it public because we didn't get a chance to work on it and it's something that I've been passionate about. And like I said, if I get an opportunity to at least work on the the last part of the term on something like that, I would definitely like to represent that. Sorry for making you wait, Counsel Butler. You wanted to say something?
Always ready to wait. So Snedon raised a really good point as to my comments, were they to be seen as collective of council preempting the process that's underway? And I'm very happy with the process that's underway for public engagement on this. So first thing to point out is that was clearly my view only and not one of council. But I'm prepared to adapt my position and say that I'm unconvinced that we should remain in the business of cardboard collection, but willing to be convinced under the right circumstances. So I certainly did not, while I realize I said we should do that, we should do it now. That would be true preempting a process that we asked administration put underway. And Ms. Nedon is completely correct that the context was to be anything but the status quo. And I guess that would have to include consideration of some manner of continuation of collection. So we'll see what comes out of that. Thank you.
I appreciate your approach and that change thereof. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. While I support the request, I think from my perspective, at least, it's important to note that this is not a request to have the two, well, to have this engagement process be the environmental responsibility committee. The intent, as I understand it, is to authorize the two members of council who were appointed to be representatives of the environmental responsibility committee attend on behalf of council through this engagement process on commercial cardboard. So it's limited, but it's it's appropriate, I think, that those two counselors are well situated to do that. But this is not to be confused with the activation of the environmental responsibility committee itself. So in that respect, I support the the recommendation from administration that we appoint two counselors to go and and sit with the Chamber of Commerce and the public representatives dealing specifically with this cardboard initiative. To Counselor Butler's point, I agree that the elimination of the surface entirely is something that is still on the table. The only thing that is absolutely off the table is the status quo. But everything else is on the table and so that can be part of the designates representation to this working group, if we call it that. The final point, though, is simply procedural. I maybe missed the date of this proposed meeting with this commercial cardboard collective. But it seems to me that we're not really in a position to make a or to authorize your attendance or the attendance of two counselors at today's meeting. So can we have such a motion prepared for next week to formalize the appointment of counselors? I mean, we could all give a nod of the head today, but I'd like to see us follow our recognized process. And if this requires some direction or decision of council, this is a committee, the whole meeting. I'm not sure that it it is the right time to make that, but I I've forgotten when the meeting is and whether we're in a rush to to get this done before next week.
Excuse me for muddying the waters there earlier. You know, and had the the committee already been informed, there would no, there wouldn't be an official ask of council for the representation. We just members of the community committee would, I think, just be part of that. So I was basically looking for a trigger to maybe expedite having an official committee. And I apologize for for using that as a stepping stone towards that. But I I remember in the initial onset, particularly for the first three or four months, Counsel McGrath and I were were asking on where we were at the process and how we can get that advanced. And then, you know, things hit the fan. So I'm willing to do that again. And I know there's a lot of, again, work to be done in other areas, so I don't want to be slamming a terms of reference request for somebody. But if that's something that gets discussed at our organizational meeting, then I'd like to have that. And any type of pressure we can put on on where we can get that set up, then I'm fine with that. And I appreciate the input that the mayor just just gave us. Ms. Nedon, you wanted to say something?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota through the mayor Ireland. We are the run, is that an expression, running against the clock? As in, we're heading into budget meetings and getting a proposal together and costing it is is what the next step would be. And I mean, tentatively, we had discussed with the Chamber of Commerce the 19th of October, which is next Monday. Just for the sake of getting it underway, because I I felt like we were we we should be moving quicker, but then at the same time, if if council would feel more comfortable with a formal appointment on the 20th, I mean, we could sure reschedule for sometime that week. So it's more around council's comfort level to send representatives without being formally appointed by motion. We will work around whatever's required or from council on that front. But we were shooting for the 19th, but having that said, we don't even know if Deputy Mayor Demota and Counselor McGrath are available that day. So there's a, it is fluid at this point. The invitations haven't been sent out yet. We were waiting to have this conversation with council today to see where to go next.
Well, I'm most comfortable with what's most comfortable with council and and what and waiting through the the legalities of of representation and what we should and shouldn't be doing. So I will make myself available for any time during the week in the afternoon particularly. So I would look forward to that. And if we have to wait till after the 20th, if if the chamber is already ready to meet at that time, then I'm comfortable if if they've already started allocating some time towards that. If not, and it needs to wait for council, because it is a municipal service, then I I'm okay with waiting after the 20th as well. Counselor Butler, you had your hand up.
I had my hand up after Counselor, Counselor Gernow did.
I apologize. Mr. Gernow, Counselor Gernow, and then Counselor Butler.
And where does Mr. or the C A O fit in here? I saw his hand up as well, so.
I'll get to him eventually.
Thank you. My, we're going around here doing a lot of talk and I'm afraid that the committee is going to end up doing a lot of talk. I think that we have to provide direction. Okay, so the status quo is no longer available in cardboard collection. What does that say? I think that the, I would like to hear from administration specifically what the options are. So if we're going to now have cardboard dropped off, we need some infrastructure, some some facilities there. The cost there is there, what's involved. I'd like to get some comments on that. So as to how feasible is it? I mean, if we go to a committee and they come out with a recommendation and you're saying, sorry, we don't have the land or we don't have the cost or facility. It's not workable. So I would think that the besides saying status quo is not available, we should have a direction or some guidelines that what is being proposed.
Yep, I agree with that. And you know, at the town hall, there was some information that came forward that we do currently, I think last year made $50,000 off of the cardboard recycling, which is, doesn't clear what it costs to operate. But it would be good to have some financial numbers and all that. And with that line of questioning, Mr. Virchow, is your hand up in regards to what Counselors you know or other thing before I get to Counsel Butler? Okay, go ahead. Counsel Butler.
Sorry, this wasn't why I asked to speak, but we didn't make $50,000 on cardboard collection. We lost $50,000 on cardboard collection.
I thought Laurent or Mr. Walduk had indicated that we had $50,000 worth of revenue off of what we had shipped off to wherever it was that we went to. And that's the only recovery we made on that through the whole process. So we lost a lot of money, but we did recoup some money from what I understood, if that's correct, Mr. Greathead.
Mr. Terry, I don't have the number right in front of me, but you're you're right. We did recoup some money, but it was at quite a loss. So I would say that we recouped anywhere from 12 to 20% is what our recoup rate with the changes that we've been able to enact with council. Allowing us to declare cardboard a nuisance and hazard and that we were able to go through with that. That's already brought a lot of efficiencies in there. Our staff is one of my, one of the drivers came in and he let me know that what took about eight hours is now taking about an hour and a half. He's he's spending three to four minutes per site as opposed to sometimes 15 to 20 minutes per site to box up the cardboard. And again, the truck is getting more full at the end of the day, less air. But I don't think we're there yet. So that's why we're still looking to explore options. And again, I've mentioned that we are noticing some of the problems and some of the the obstacles we're still facing with this program. And that's why we want to further keep pushing this along before we come up with a finalized plan. You know, we make, I believe we have to make sure that the property owners have to have a place for this and not, you know, not continue one of the practice of carry it over to your neighbor's spot and drop it there and hope everything's going to be okay. We have and daily, I believe, last week when our crew was out on Friday, we had our drivers report three unacceptable properties for, sorry, unacceptable properties. And then Bylaw was able to give a notification to the affected business owners and let them know that we would be coming by at 2 P M to further discuss the concerns. By 2 P M, it was tidied up. But having said that, that is onerous. That's involving your driver. That's involving your manager, myself, and then by law to get people to clean it up. So we're not there yet, but we're well on our way.
It's good. And I'd like to hear some of that positive progress and and even in in having some discussions with some business managers and or owners in discussing those sharing of property lines and where the the cardboard ends up. In some of the conversations I had is that person hasn't come and talked to me. So then when you go and talk to the other person, they say, well, that person hasn't come and talked to me. So it's just a matter of getting the people together, because some people just won't take the initiative to go and say, hey, we should do this together, because, you know, all our our collective cardboard is ending up over here or I see that yours is ending up on my side. So it's a matter of getting a little bit more engagement and whether we have a committee from the community that that ends up transpiring, that would be great, but I'm looking forward to the next conversation. And thank you very much for your efforts and, you know, working with the businesses and progressing this with your staff. There was one point, but Counsel, by the way, like to speak.
Thank you. The only reason I had asked to speak actually was I don't want to, I rarely differ on procedural ground with the mayor. But I don't, it doesn't seem to me that we would need a council decision to appoint in this particular case. We have two counselors designated to sit on the putative environmental committee. This is an environmental issue. It strikes me that we're we're within our bailiwick to just go with that. Honestly, I, it seems to me we're already going around in circles to to come back with a R F D and notice myself, I don't know how other counselors feel, but I'm satisfied that the two counselors have been appointed to the environmental committee. This is an environmental issue unless there's real objection, I suggest we just do that.
I'm okay with that as well. If you do look at our organizational chart for committees, we are technically assigned, but again, there is no official commit committee. And I'm okay to represent regardless of anything. I think that we can represent council as counselors. And if it's okay with the rest of council that we do that, then that's fine. Mr. Mayor, do you have any thing to add to that?
I cede to the will of council. I think it's important to recognize procedural issues if council is comfortable. I have, I have no further argument against it.
Then if it's okay with Counsel McGrath, I'm okay to to meet. I'm available in the afternoon on Monday, however that works out for everybody, I'm not sure. But if it has to be done in the morning, then I'll trust if Counsel McGrath is available. I'm good with the information that she would bring back or provide.
If we could maybe discuss the timeframe via email, it'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you for helping me expedite that along. Would anyone else like to add something to agenda item seven point four before we move to brief updates or actually a recess? Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to go on record and this might be my only opportunity. to thank staff for their efforts in convening that commercial cardboard town hall. I, I did speak during the town hall and gave credit to a number of our other partners involved in the process, but I failed to give proper recognition to our own staff and, and the preliminary work. And part of that was because I simply lacked the understanding of, of the work that had been done. So I used this opportunity to, to credit staff. I, I think it was, it rolled out really quite well. It might have been nice as Counselor Demota indicated, had, had there been a little more uptake, but the, the uptake that was there from the public was extremely helpful and very knowledgeable, but putting it all together was a combined effort. And our staff was largely responsible for that. And I didn't give them proper credit. So I extend that credit now with, with a degree of humility and, and apology because I should have been better versed in, in the background before I spoke at all. So Mr. Don, thank you for your efforts. Mr. Greathead, thank you for your efforts and, and all those who supported you from the organization. I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because we've been here for an hour and a half, it is now 11:01. If we can return, I'd like to call for a brief recess. If we can return at 11:10 to resume the remainder, starting at brief updates with agenda item number eight. I wasn't given the go ahead, but people knew that I was going to start because I promised to get going at 11:10. But the person that we need for the next update is not here. So could we get to 11 or 8.1 and move forward to 8.2, the arena reopening? Or does that involve the other members as well?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I may, I, Mrs. McNabb is on online via Zoom. Yvonne, if you're around and you're, you want to introduce us perhaps?
I am around. Thank you. Deputy Demota, counselors, mayor. So would you like me to review the entire request for decision again to refresh?
Well, that will have to be desired counsel. I just wanted to let the other gentleman know we started on 8.2 because we weren't sure when you were getting back. So we're, we're at the arena reopening, council. Mrs. McNabb has requested if you want us to reread it, or do we know what's going on? It looks like we're good. So any discussion from council on any of the information that's been brought forward to us on the re, arena reopening? I know that was brought forward today for further discussion. Mr. Virtue?
Mr. Chair, there was a question of council that administration had prepared to respond to verbally. That's what the report is back before you today. We didn't include it in the report. We didn't revise the written report, but it was going to be a verbal update just on the question regarding the funding. So I don't know that Yvonne was just asking if you'd want an overview of the whole report first or just simply to respond to that question. And it was, the question was basically the, the money, if it was a one-time type expense or if it was an ongoing type expense. So the one-time meaning like in terms of startup costs for ice making and whatnot, or if it was kind of like your regular monthly cost. So that was the question in council last week.
Well, I don't think that we need to, to go over the, the whole process, but at, if, if we can address those comments and requests. Okay, go ahead, Yvonne.
I can do that. So the $34,000 ask is for, for staff. One staff member to start on October 26th. That will start with cleanup and getting ready for the ice install and then also installing the ice. That'll also be, that person will also be developing protocols with Peter and will also be working on a training program for the staff as they return. The remainder of the staff would start back on November 30th, which would allow them some time to train again on the Zamboni after being off of it for seven months. And that would include a full-time operator and one part-time operator and one part-time worker. Those positions were currently the positions that we had in the arena and bringing that back as we progress. Then there was an additional $1,700 in that $34,000 request for extra custodial for COVID cleaning. So that was making sure that we are covering all the protocols with regards to the COVID cleaning. And it also included the whitewash for the startup of the, the ice, which was not in the budget. After the reductions. That's it.
Well, I like that follow-up and the detail and walking us through that. Do any of the counselors care to comment on that information that was asked to be brought forward? I don't have any comments myself at this moment, but I particularly appreciate the, the level of detail that was given to us, Mrs. McNabb. And thank you for preparing that for us. Counselor Butler, you'd like to say something?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the few details of what's included in the $34,000, but I'd like to see a breakdown of how we get to $34,000. There must, for example, be some income component. As it's been reported that there have been bookings. What I'm trying to get at is, is that largely a monthly cost that we can expect to see as we project forward into the 2020 year. My concern is we've seen in our service, the, the recent, sorry, I'm grasping for the word, the, the breakdown of services and costs accordingly, that in a year, we come out with a deficit of, I think it was $260,000 in a normal year or in 2019, at least $260,000 for operations in the arena in a given year. So I can't, I'm unable to draw a connection between this one month request of $34,000 and what that's going to look like over the longer term. I'm not going to argue against opening the arena, but I just don't have enough facts to understand why that amount. What kind of income are we expecting? I would like to ask, for example, well, I will ask, how many hours of arena use is anticipated? How much hockey and public skating and other uses? I don't know what else there might be. Are we expecting in the month of December? And how many hours of arena use are we expecting ongoing? I'm concerned that this one month ask, while we've committed, we're going to open the arena. This one month ask is, I think, likely to imply an ongoing commitment into the new budget year. And I just don't have enough information. I've noticed that on a part-time basis, there's 67 and a half hours of the arena being open in December alone, per week, sorry, per week in December. We've directed that we should be opening our facilities for local use. I, it seems like a, a lot. And if we're not seeing some offsetting income, I have concerns. So that's why I wanted to see, you know, honestly, a fairly detailed breakdown of what $34,000 in a month of where that is derived from. And I understand that we probably don't have that today, but I think it's necessary to make an informed decision on this item. Thank you.
Well, before I get back to you, Mrs. McNabb, I just, I've been talking a little bit in the community and to some of our regular user groups. And it's been kind of difficult because the, the, the moving target of the opening and when it was first projected and then whether counsel or not, there was the perception that council didn't want to have it open. And then we said we were going to try to have it open as early as possible. And there were a lot of moving targets. And so it was very hard for user groups to make a commitment, particularly with teams in hockey, involved in hockey that had to set up practice times and stuff. And that's why you see some of that happening in Hinton, from my understanding. So people have already made commitments because of that moving target. They weren't sure. So in the report, Mrs. McNabb said that revenues would be unclear because we're not sure who would commit at this point. And I'm not 100% convinced that the arena will be up and operating at that time myself. But if we can do that and, and we get going, there are some startup costs to get us to that level. And I can see that in a normal year where it costs about $20,000 a month to run on average, that, you know, there will be greater allocations for this part of getting started up because of the actual startup and getting people back and training and cleaning and all that other stuff. So I'm clear on that myself. I don't know if Mrs. McNabb would like to add to anything to that. And then Mrs. Malincheck would like to, to say a few things. Mrs. McNabb, but was I close to assessing some of that information?
Yes, absolutely. With regards to revenue, so we anticipated revenue to a certain point. And that's what you see in the original budget that Natasha, Ms. Melanchuk did. So that revenue was there. We haven't added any more revenue because we don't have any bookings yet, because we're not open to take the arena bookings at this particular point because we don't know when those will actually start. So that's why there's no additional information on the revenue side of things. We've just put together what the expenses will be to year end and have not added any additional revenue, if that makes sense.
All right. Mrs. Malincheck?
Thank you, deputy. Yes. So basically, when we put a budget together, we're always looking at the worst case scenario and that uncertainty at the moment cohorts are completely different and we don't know how things are going to work out for us. And so that being said, we want to be prepared for worst case scenario and that we have enough going forward. And, and that's how we have been, you know, budgeting in the past. And we have to look at, at all potential scenarios here. And that is what has been done. And, and that is why the pandemic offer definitely changes how the arena could potentially move forward in this situation. So and given a pandemic, we're looking at the worst. Thank you.
Great. I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Virtue threw you to whoever might be best positioned to answer this. I, I need a clearer understanding of what the $34,000 is in addition to. It says additional net deficit of, of that amount, but is that additional to the 2020 budget before it was reduced or after it was reduced? If, if we go back to the earlier discussion, the tax-supported operational costs of the arena from previous years is a little over $260,000, which is about $720 a day. That's pre-COVID. That's the amount of tax support that we have previously approved for the arena. The $34,000 figure would suggest a little over $1,000 a day. But the difference between those is only about $8,600 for the month. And I accept that that might carry on in, in COVID times. But I, I don't know whether we're looking at an additional $1,000 a day to run the arena. That is additional to what we used to spend or whether we're looking at $300 a day. And I, I just need clarity, not so much in the numbers, but in the words, additional to what is my question?
Deputy Demota through to Mayor Ireland. So that was additional to the reduced budget that council had asked for in March. So this, our budget was completely reduced in the arena. And so this is an addition to the 2020 reduced budget.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So if I understand that correctly, then this about recaptures funds that we would previously have spent and then adds some additional funds. So it's not new to, it's, it's not all in additional to what we would typically spend.
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Mrs. Malincheck, did you want to add to that? Or did that answer, did what you wanted answered to get answered? Okay. And I appreciate that. And, and I realized the two, and when we discussed the, the reductions, the council also made a commitment to look at transferring back some of the money that we had put away for reserves so that amount that was just under $800,000 that we had reduced to. So I'm not sure if the M O S T, the most funding would apply here. And, you know, I don't want to, because we've got announcement of that, have a perception of coming out and spending like the, the drunken sailor scenario as council, but that funding was there to provide some sort of initiatives like this to get restarted and to help compensate for shutdowns and things like that. So there was a reduction in the service and availability of the arena. We were able to tackle a lot of things in that closure and getting started, startup is going to add a little bit of a challenge. And we did as a council make a commitment to look at reopening things and talk about refunding them if possible. But if there's a way to do that outside of, you know, municipal tax support, then I'm, I'm willing to look for in that direction. Ms. Malincheck?
Deputy Mayor, yes, you're completely correct. This is the, the direction of that grant and it will be, those are the things that I will be looking at to for the statement of funds expended. It would apply to this funding for sure.
Thank you. That, that adds a little bit of relief in the decision-making because personally, I'd, I'd like to, if possible with, with the proper precautions and procedures, I'd like to see people get out and, and being able to do a little bit more activity in the community, particularly that it's getting colder out. We made the commitment to get the fitness and aquatic center open and various areas in, in the activity center. So I think this is the next step. And, and if the arena is ready to go and we can do it without any hitches, then I'm in support of getting something done, whether you know, it, it comes out of the promise that we made to, to review our reductions. And if, if there is some relief from that funding that, that could help us open up at least to take care of one month of And if, if there is some relief from that funding that, that could help us open up, at least to take care of one month of 2020, then I'm okay with, with trying to allocate some of that funding there. So that's just my personal take on it. I think if, if we can get people out doing physical activity earlier with the proper precautions, the better it is for the community. Counselor Keller MP.
Just on the opening hours of the arena from 3:30 to 11:00 and on Saturdays, 8 to 11:00, 11:00, will this also mean the activity center will be open so that gymnastics and other groups will have longer times? Or is that just strictly for the arena?
Deputy Demota through to Counselor Keller Hempie. The extra hours right now would not see the front desk open, but it would put the arena open. So it doesn't necessarily increase the gymnastics availability, but it does, it does cover all the, the areas of the arena.
Okay. Through Mr. Virtue to Mrs. McNabb, is that a normal practice? And for, forgive me for forgetting if do we not always need a person at the desk when the activity center is open? Or we operated in the past with not having any supervision in that area? And go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, the only time we have we haven't had a receptionist is for the early morning times for the, for the tournaments. All other times have been covered except for, well, also the evening adult hockey. So the rest of the facility gets completely closed down and guests are requested to leave by the arena doors only. And then arena staff also go and check the doors to make sure everything is locked completely when they leave, just in case somebody went out one of the other entrances.
Okay. And, you know, I, I think that we'll probably uncover some efficiencies and inefficiencies when we're going through that process because we don't have a crystal ball or you don't have a crystal ball. So there might be some things like in going through our cardboard collection process, some things got uncovered. And although we've been in the practice of, of having the arena operate like that, there might be some unforeseen things that we haven't thought about that could occur. And because of COVID and the protocols in place, like, I know that now people have to dress outside or, or take care of, you know, their equipment, things prior to getting in, because we won't have the dressing room capability right off the bat that that one exit and entrance might cause some issues. But I can't, I, I don't operate, I'm not in the facility. I have no idea what goes on as far as managing that. So that's just something that popped into my head. So, you know, there, there might be some further costs and, you know, and if that be it to, to make it run properly, we have to look at that. Counselor Butler. Counselor McGrath, then Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. I'm certainly in favor of opening the arena at the earliest day possible. Many of us are commuting every weekend to Hinton for our children to play hockey and that's myself included. And, and it's wonderful that we can be on the ice and recreate once again, but certainly practicing in your hometown is, is favorable and not being on the highway when the snow flies is, is desirable for the safety of all Jasper residents. But I do agree with Counselor Butler to make an informed decision next week, seeing this as line items and understanding the expenditures would certainly be beneficial.
All right. Counselor Butler, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Demota through to Mrs. McNabb. Could you clarify, Mrs. McNabb, something that I thought you said, which is that we have no bookings for the arena because we haven't been open to receive them is, did I understand that correctly or did I misunderstand that?
Sorry, it took him a second to get on there. Deputy Demota through to Counselor Butler. We haven't booked any because we don't have, we don't know the date to be able to book it. So in order to book minor sports, they need to start booking ice time. So we haven't been open in the sense that that facility is not open. So we can't book ice time because we don't know the date. So it's speaking specifically about the arena.
I understand. Thank you.
Counselors, you know, did you have your hand up? I thought you just waved. Okay, all right. Usually you have something to say about the arena. So I, I thought you caught me off, offside there. Does anyone else? Mr. Mayor, did you have any last thoughts? All right. So I'm getting the sense that from some of the counselors that we'd like to see a little bit more detail behind the 34,000. And, okay. I'm, I'm actually okay with the number and I don't need the details, but for the rest of everyone else. Counselor Butler.
I'd like to see an extended monthly deficit estimate into the new year. If it's the will of council to see that now, it would help me. Because I'm not okay with the number that we've seen because it's not detailed enough for me. I would find it very valuable to be able to compare the anticipated additional deficit over and above the deficit we have already been running relative to upcoming years. I am not, I'll say it again, I said it earlier, I am not engaged in an argument against opening the arena. We've made that commitment. I'm not attempting in any way to go down that road, but I think we have to explore cost efficiencies for these facilities. I believe that the decisions we have been making on reopening this, these facilities may cause us concern and I would prefer that we not find that we're in the position of now facing the 2021 budget of having to scale back on expenditures that we have already committed to for 2020. I would rather have those conversations now than make commitments and then find, oh, well, we can't afford that for 2021. So now what are we going to do? So that's the spirit in which I am raising this. I am looking forward to seeing the facility open as soon as it's able to open. Thank you.
And I appreciate that insight, particularly looking at that. But what I'm concerned about is when we have to look at every department now and going into details of all the costs, are we not going to be reverting back into the budget that style that we were moving away from? And I think that one of the reasons we're moving into the new process was to avoid that type of drill down and scrutiny. And I'm putting trust in, particularly for the month of December, when I'm told that it's $34,000. I need to be comfortable with that. And I know that the people that have put those numbers together are telling us what it costs to operate and for that month, but I, I appreciate your angle, but I thought that's what we were trying to get away from. If you had something, and then Mr. Virtue would like to say something. Counselor Butler, go ahead.
It's our job to look into every department. That's why we asked for the service by service deficit estimates.
Perfect. That's good. Mr. Virtue.
Mr. Chair to Council, just, I just want to sort of separate two processes here. One is in order to sort of have a staff plan, have a communications with the groups on upcoming opening of the facility. Just like we did with the pool and with the fitness center, for administration to be geared up and ready to start, we need the decision on sort of the 2020 request sooner than later. Otherwise, we have to risk manage hiring staff in the absence of council, because there's simply no time to hire staff within the short, short timeframes from the decision date to the opening date. So I'd like to separate that process on this specific request from the greater conversation on budget and what you just raised with Counselor Butler on, on how we look at the facilities and operating. And there's a saying, garbage in, garbage out. And with the changes in sport, with hockey and all the other sports, literally the rules are changing weekly on what can and can't be held in facilities, how they can, can be held, whether spectators can attend or not, or how many, and that all of those things affect revenue. Like, there's no way that we could accurately provide counsel with any kind of reasonable data for next year on the revenue streams that might be possible in the arena at this time. It would be simply a guess. And I don't believe that would be appropriate for administration to provide that type of, of information to counsel on, on a pure guess form. We can provide you with what we know today. But that might change a lot by next month, the month after. So if we could just keep these two separate and if counsel could be clear what we need for next week in order to make a decision on the 20th, and we could provide a, what I've heard is a spreadsheet of what these costs are. And again, even on this short term, just for this year, the revenues are still quite a bit of an unknown. But there will be some. We just don't kind of give you exactly how much because things will get booked as we are ready to open. So my request is just simply that, like, what do we need for this request for next week in order to prepare counsel for a decision next week?
Okay, good. And before I go to Counselor Butler, just for clarification on my part, so the, the perceived $260,000 and maybe this will go through to Counselor, or sorry, through to Mrs. McNabb or Mrs. Malincheck. The perceived 260,000 yearly. That's based on revenue recovery for total amount. So I think when we're looking at the extended monthly deficits, going forward to 2021, we would be looking at a worst case scenario without revenue because we don't know exactly what revenue would be like. So that 260 could be projected into an entirely different number, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Deputy Mayor, with any budget, it's, it's our best guess at how things are going to go. We've been doing fairly good over the years, I believe. And it will be exactly the same thing. And we have to try to look at what the, the, the year could be for us. And, and we always try to give a worst case scenario in, in that so that we're prepared, but that we're close as well. And it is going to be very, very challenging. And that's going to be coming up further in the discussions about the process for the 2021 budget and how to go forward since we heard from council that council wanted to discuss 2019 numbers. So that being said, we'll have to work with those numbers as well as look at into the future as best as we can. And that's all we can do. But I must say, over the years, administration has done a very good job at keeping in line with, with the budget.
Right. Okay. I'm going to go to Counselor Butler first and then Counselors, you know.
In response to Mr. Virtue's point, I'm happy if we could receive next week just as detailed a breakdown as it is possible to provide. I think you referenced a bit of a spreadsheet. I think that would be great on the December. Skyhead referenced having some forward-looking estimates. I'm happy to leave that for now so we can focus on, on December. I, I think what I'm struggling with, just to contextualize it, is administration has made a decision about the amount of time that they feel the facility should be open for. So there must be some assumptions upon which that decision is founded. And those assumptions must translate into some amount of anticipated community use and income according. I just am really interested in getting some sense of that. But if we can have as detailed a breakdown as possible, preferably written for next week, I'm happy to call the question and get the facility open and move forward and we'll deal with 2020 in due course, sorry, 2021 in due course. So I hope that clarifies what I am asking for and makes it straightforward for administration. Thank you.
Well, now that you put it that way, I, I'm way more comfortable in, in directing and asking administration to come up with those numbers in the context that you just detailed. And I, I think that insight is for me quite welcome. So if that's okay with the rest of council and through Mr. Virtue to to, for to, through to Mrs. McNabb and Mrs. Malincheck, if that information may be available for us by next week, if that be possible. Okay. Thank you for that. And Counselors, you know, sorry.
Continuing the conversation. Thank you. We've been discussing this for a long time and we don't have the information. The $34,000 is the breakdown that we need. It appears high. And from the discussion we received right now, it appears excessive. So I echo Counselor Butler's request that we want a breakdown of what this is. I hear 70 hours or 67 hours of part-time a week. That's 10 hours a day. That's a lot of part-time. Why? That's what we want to know. And like Counselor Butler says, we want to know whether that's going to be continuing into the 21, 20, 21 budget year. So the discussion should be brief at this point. We want more information and the information should be a total breakdown of what the 34,000 is going to be. So we can decide next week.
Okay. I won't get into any more debate on that. We have a direction for administration. I appreciate the input and sorry that I went ahead of you there. Does anyone else have anything to contribute to the discussion, add to debate or ask for information at this point? I appreciate the input and the conversation, although lengthy, we got to, to some resolve there for direction at least anyway. Now that moves us back to agenda item 8.1, seasonal suspension of compost collection. I'm sure you appreciated the break from topics, Mr. Greathead, although it wasn't intentional. I could see there is a little bit of relief there. So now we're getting into some more contentious conversation. Would you like to lead us off on, on that? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as we've been, we did hear the will of council and that composting and the environmental concerns and our stewardship and how we go about things are one of our highest priorities personally and career-wise, I follow along the same lines. Having said that, we are looking for, for some solutions and the comparison, I just would like to dispel a myth, I guess, you know, just using a linear comparison to other communities and saying that Jasper has unique demands on it that I should highlight, having asked for a suspension in the service. So right now, one of the major sentiments that I've heard is that Banff is able to do it. So how come we aren't? With, with regards to Banff's compost setup, they're not using a bin system. They're using the larger, more expensive two-yard containers that you hook the hydraulics to and your standard garbage truck and it flips it right in. And those are Teflon lined, whereas ours are a bin that houses the carts that are roll out. And we have a special arm that is manufactured to adapt to fit the plastic roll-off bins. So we're, if we are to maintain our level of service, I would suggest that we purchase maybe two to three of these Teflon-lined hydraulic bins and strategically place them throughout town. But we're still looking at, at some different options. And as well, I'd like to caution against a linear comparison, just right
And as well, I'd like to caution against a linear comparison just right across to Banff, whereas our. Solid waste recycling compost staff, there's five of us all told, taking care of it and. We had sent Mr Meisho, the utilities manager and Mr Valduk. Operations Service Manager down to Banff and connect with peers and ask some of the questions and see what they're doing better than what we are doing. Banff has approximately 34 staff in their solid waste and recycling where we have five. So there's there is that it it, just because they're doubling in size of community, say their. Their population's roughly 10,000 reported, whereas we're roughly 5,000. Banff has also taken on a business model where they are servicing Lake Louise and Canmore. And they're actually turning a profit at these because they did scale up, so. I'm just here really to to speak to those, you know, we are, we are listening, we are looking for solutions. And if there's any more guidance before we come back next week and finalize everything. That they'd like us to consider, absolutely, I'm free and I'm all ears.
I'm actually impressed that composting could have some good revenues attached to it. So that they are making money and maybe that's the contribution from the the outlying municipalities and or district. From over there and I can't see our operation or our service, they're. Operating at a cost recovery at least anyway, this is always going to be a loss for the community, but I mean, for the sake of the environment. But to what extent, like councillor Wilson said last week, to to what extent do we do we know what's happening to? To the end use of the product and where it's totally going and if what our efforts are or. What we're currently doing going to end up in in the normal landfill somewhere, then what's the point of the process and I'm. Are you 100% sure on what what the end use of of what's coming out of Jasper, where it goes or does it leave Jasper? You know, what's what's happening with all of that, like, I'm a little confused on that, but I think for the sake of, you know, making decisions and and having. Understanding from the community, from the residents who particularly the ones that really support this and want to use it, I know that. There are some people that are very, I don't want to use the term religious, but are are very frequent users and. And it's a very important value to them within the community and I don't want to dismiss it because it costs money or do that. Because we're supposed to be, we're in an environment where. I think a community national park where we should be leading in some areas and that's not to put any. Extra pressure on you, but if if all the steps that we're taking to be positive and good. And somewhere that isn't positive and good, then you know, the people that are participating in that should know. And you know, and if we come to that realization, then we got to start thinking about a different system, so if that helps. You know, shutting it down for a little while so that we can improve what what's offered, I'm all point, I'm I'm all. About supporting what is going to make the better. Use of the material and what's best for the community as a whole, so. If it's not benefiting anyone and it's costing us money, then we have to look at that direction. I appreciate the the effort that you're taking and and it's a good process to to be going through all that, so. And I don't want to get into the linear examples, but if we can find out how they're making it successful beyond the Teflon bins. And we need to start taking approaches in in that direction. Then I'm all for improving that if we can do it, that isn't going to be at a huge cost to the greater goods. We have to consider that too, because there are people in in the community that that probably wouldn't support it if. The financial allocations are are going to be too dear. Those are my points, councillor McGrath.
Thank you, Mr Greathead, both for recognizing council's position on this and for putting the extra work into. Looking into other communities specifically Banff and drawing a comparison for us, it's really important to understand that. I'm curious on capital expenditures and capital costs for say three Teflon lined bins. In order to make a decision next week, I I certainly do not agree with the one recommendation of. Of suspending the seasonal collection of compost, so having another option to make a motion with next week would be really wonderful. For council to have on the table and for us to have more options to consider, so. Maybe understanding what the fiscal implications of another choice might be for this season. And what a few drop off points might look like for us residents to contribute and drive or walk or bike our compost to these. Common areas in which we might be able to use, say for winter use only. I'm looking forward to the discussion next week and as I said last week, not ready to give up, thank you.
Thank you, councillor McGrath, I'm not ready to give up either. So I I don't, there's some clear direction from councillor McGrath, Mr Greathead, aside from the. How much the bins are, have you looked into that already or is that something that is on the radar for you?
Mr Chair, we have requested some pricing on those bins, I'm just waiting for the final. I'm expecting it to be about $6,000 per bin to to house these. You're asking the whole. Overall program delivery of the success of it and. And I, you know, I I can prepare some information on that, where it goes. I've specified before, part of the problem is is that we pick the material up and we drop it off at the waste transfer station. And that's as far as our responsibility goes towards the composting program, so that's, you know, another concern.
Okay, well, we need to probably work with our partners in in that and and find out where what Parks Canada is doing with it and. I believe that's, they might have that information available to us, Mr Mayor, you'd like to add to the conversation?
Thank you. To Mr Furchill, through you to Mr Greathead, I. I share the view expressed by councillor McGrath that I. I am interested in other options rather than suspending the service. I I have a couple of questions, I mean, I I appreciate the suggestion of the larger bins, I don't know how. Large a two yard bin is, the typical garbage bins that are out there that are hydraulically lifted. Are they larger than two yards?
Yes, the typical garbage bins that you see out in the town are four and six yard bins. So these are a much smaller bin, a little more compact.
So is that the type of bin that is currently located at the block S recycling area, there there is a compost bin there that is hydraulically lifted? Is that a two yard bin?
I believe so, but I'll have to check to make sure.
Okay, so a proposal to have fewer of those, but operational. Within the community for the winter months might be, might be a viable option from my perspective. I'm also curious as to when this problem was identified, it comes to us now, but we've had a compost. Program with the same equipment for a number of years, has there been a sharp spike in WCB claims or is this? And something that has been noticeable over a number of years and is it a change in practice other than? The program itself, it just, it it just seems to me that, and perhaps it's just you in the position are in it are now able to identify. Some concerns that simply weren't identified earlier, but it it seems to me we've been operating this program. For a number of years with the same equipment and had not previously heard of the impact on WCB payments, for example. I wonder whether there is an option though to simply address with some sort of retrofit. The existing infrastructure, we just took all the boards out of the arena, are there any of those? Plastic sheets that a driver could just flop down in front of the bin to wheel the the cart on, so he doesn't have to drag it through the snow, I mean, are. Are there not options that could be addressed on site? Even if it it increases or decreases the efficiency, I suppose, it may also prevent injuries, I. I would just like to know that every avenue has been investigated because the report indicates that. You can't call the program a success, but I'm not sure that we've really identified. How we measure success and I think part of the success is driving an environmental ethos within the community. And there is some cost to that, fair enough, but suspending the service, I think, works against us in a in a very detrimental way, so. If there are any opportunities to reconfigure the existing system. That would be probably my first preference, but if the next option is continue the service in a more limited capacity with larger bins. And fewer of them, then that might be my second option, but the last place I want to go is a discontinuation of the service. Even for the for the winter months. But I I appreciate the report and I don't want to. Pretend to understand your operational challenges, but I would like the comfort of knowing at decision time that. All options have been investigated to some degree.
Mr Chair, if I can respond to. Mr Ireland's question, I believe the WCB component is a newer issue. I had heard about it when I first arrived here, but I believe that was a new assessment as we went through our core certification. And part of that was the penalties was that we had to work towards a return to work. Program and worker accommodation for injured staff and we've made quite a bit of progress on that, so that's. It's kind of a peripheral. But the root injuries actually were caused from the the manhandling the. The rollout bins, just as a concern, I would worry about putting a. Like the puck board or any of that out in the winter months, it just more slip, more chance for slip and falls. Less stable footing, that's that's a concern I'd have for that. But I've been taking notes and I'm sure that we'll get back to you with a a pretty good report and a request for decision for next week.
All right, is everyone satisfied with that discussion? Appreciate the info. Now we've done 8.1, 8.2, that moves us to 8.3 in town parking, I will note that it is. 12 o'clock noon now. And if it's the will of council to to proceed through to. To the end of the discussion here, at least to agenda item 12. I'm hoping to get through those things within the next hour, if we can go to to one, I don't know if administrations. Hopefully you're comfortable with that, unless you wanted to take a break and come back, so. I'm just offering it out there because I don't want to assume that we're just going to drive through. So everyone comfortable with continuing? I need to, I need some help pumping up the air in here, folks, all right, so we're going to move to 8.3 in town parking. Administration, Mr Furchill, I think through to Mrs Malincheck, you'd like to to lead this report?
Yes, thank you, um, today we're bringing back the in town park, paid parking. As a request for direction in concern in concerning the 2021 budget going forward. And whether or not council would like to see it as part of the 2021 plan. Council has seen a few presentations to give a little bit of an idea of directions we could take and there's lots of governance. Discussions to occur surrounding what would happen with this situation. However, in strategic relevance, I must highlight that. It in governance and social equity, it mentions to seek out and pursue alternative sources of revenue. And that's why this this is coming forward. Also to allocate expenses equitably among taxpayers, service users and visitors and. To pursue equitable allocation of costs between the community and the visitors. And among community payers by expanding visitor user fees where feasible, so there's a lot of. Strategic relevance that is hit there with this one, one. Item and it's been a challenge for administration to. Come to council with ideas on additional sources of revenue and. We feel that this might be one way that we might be able to succeed. The roads that we have right now are very. Well, the infrastructure is very old, the roads are old, the infrastructure below them is very old, we're looking at. 50, 60 year old assets underneath of those roadways, so. And the expense behind. Repairing all and replacing all of those is very expensive, I believe that Mr Greathead said 2.5 million per block. And we have 37 blocks within town, so close to $100 million. There's something that has to be done here, we inherited this, these assets. And we have not had a plan in the past on how to move forward with repairing them, so. That being said, just looking for that direction, whether or not I am going to be putting it into the budget presentation for this year or not. It will take substantial amount of work to figure out the numbers behind it, so. And the the clock is ticking, we're getting close to budget presentation time, so that's why it's coming again today, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs Malincheck. And as I, oh, I have one hand up, I was just going to add one thing to that conversation and I appreciate. The angle that you're taking in in discussing. The capital recovery that we need to replace all our deteriorated infrastructure and. We have an added responsibility because of the traffic flow coming to our community and another issue to discuss. About paying land rent for the greater visitation and the impact that it has on our community, not just on our backstreets for residents, but. You know, in Ohio area, so what I would like to see from my point of view, and this is not a direction of council, is. For council to pick one of the three groups that proposed to us, ask them to come to the community. Get them to do an assessment, what it's going to cost to implement that assessment. And what the future revenues for running their particular system in our community could contribute. With all the costs set aside for maintaining and and running it, and that includes bylaw and and all that other stuff. Because there is a perception in the community that, you know, when we go out with your initial infrastructure, the payback time with paying bylaw and doing all that. Is going to cost more money than the revenue and that's just an assumption, because people just think it's going to cost us more money than it costs to operate and. Seeing what happens in other communities, particularly resort communities, I beg to differ, so I would like to see some results. So if I was going to go and put some funding, whether it's municipally tax base or some of that MOST money, because this is. Part of a, you know, that extra money that we got to to operate as as a resort municipality, I I know that it's it's outside of COVID. But we, because we need to look at alternate sources of revenue, this could be something that that could help us out in the long run, so. Before we decide whether it's going to cost us money to run or not, I would like to allocate some money after picking a group. And asking them how much it would cost to come to our community and do an assessment, I'd rather pay for that first. And if council at the time budget wants to allocate more money to go towards the implementation of that. Then we might have to look at at looking at some reserve money if we want to start that in 2021. I can't right now with the information we have, make a decision or make an informed decision to go with the paid parking, whatever it is. So I would like to have. whatever it is. So I would like to have a bit of a detailed report from whoever we pick to go forward to see how much money it could bring potentially to the community. And having the experience of this summer at the risk of rambling on and and not lose people's attention here. I know it's regardless of what the topic is, it's difficult. So if I talk louder, I don't think that's going to help. But I think it would be pertinent to look at that angle and make it justifiable to move forward. So I'm willing personally to look at getting some funding towards an assessment of what could potentially be how it could potentially operate beneficially for the community. Counselor Butler.
Sorry, I've forgotten what I was going to say.
Yeah, it's probably my fault, but and I might have answered your question. Who knows?
I don't know if the rest of council thinks the same way. Counselor McGrath.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. I'm I'm certainly interested in the discussion of in town paid parking and and I'm not even sure where my values are these days. They've definitely changed since the global pandemic has has occurred and has affected everyone's finances everywhere. But I'm I'm interested in the smartphone app and I'm interested in that the presentation from the woman that required very little capital investment. First and foremost, that seemed like a an interesting way to venture into the paid parking realm in the community without investing hundreds of thousands of dollars upfront, say it doesn't go well in our community. I don't want to have made a mistake there. I would certainly ask administration and council if there's a will to engage the community on this. This is a huge topic and this is a huge item of discussion that our residents, just as we're engaging them in the cardboard collection, we need to engage them and that will likely be a long process. And I think if we can come to some sort of decision and consensus of what direction we would like to go, if it is that we are considering paid parking in town, let's start that public engagement so we can make sure that the residents that we represent are also on board with that idea.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath. Counselor Butler.
Thank you. Mrs. Malinchuck hit the nail exactly on the head. While this is about paid parking, it is first and foremost and primarily about how we pay for municipal infrastructure. The way we pay for municipal for our streets and roads and for our parking spaces on those streets and roads and outside of those streets and roads is has not been equitable. The people that make the greatest use of parking in our community are not those who pay the most for it. And we've gone some road, some way down that road of trying to address that with the new parking lot. We are absolutely going to have to adjust as we go. But I think we adopted an important principle there. And so the conversation at its simplest level is about paid parking. And my concern there is that there will be, and I have already been party to considerable pushback about the idea of paid parking. But we have to pay for our infrastructure and I think it's important that we do so in as equitable a way as possible. So this is about moving to a user pay model for the way we pay for some of our infrastructure. And as such, I think it's a really important conversation. The question today is should we plan to implement this in the upcoming budget year? And that's what administration needs an answer to. While I think it's an important conversation to have, Counselor McGrath just mentioned one really important reason. It's going to be a conversation that takes some time. We can't just do this. We have to. We will have to have extensive public consultation. I don't want us to go out there and have public consultation until we have an idea of what a model might look like. Because when we go to the community and say, do you want paid parking? People are going to say, well, hell no. Because who does really? I'm in favor of moving forward with a conversation if it's founded on two really important principles. I think we have to improve the equity, the situation. The people that make the most use of parking should be the ones that pay. And then the other really important piece that I don't think we're close to having information, full information on yet, is would there be an overall financial, positive financial impact? And while we heard some pretty positive general indications from those who presented, I'm unconvinced of that yet. Particularly if we simply take it from the point of view that, well, we'll charge the tourists. I fear that we could go down a road of capital investment and making some people pretty unhappy and discover that by the time we've paid for infrastructure and meters or whatever used now instead of meters and applications, phone apps and commissions and staff and enforcement that the overall financial impact on the community wouldn't be worth the pain. And I would need to see a really built out model based on those. So I don't think we can implement something for 2020. Mayor Ireland referenced a couple of meetings back, his fear and I share it that, you know, if we don't do it this year, then we're into another council term. And this idea could just get dropped and I am concerned about that. But I don't see how we could do more than perhaps this year. Allocate a small, a moderate budget amount to getting a model built out. Maybe an RFQ request for qualifications and maybe supply a little bit of funding to a couple of firms to come in and say, this is how it would work and really build out the the profit model for this so that we could make an intelligent decision. But to the immediate ask, should we build in some component of income from paid parking for this budget year? I just don't see how we could get there between now and when we need to pass a budget. Thank you.
Well, now I forgot what I was going to say, but I think Counselor Butler iterated some of the stuff or most of the stuff that I was alluding to is better and maybe more words. I'm not sure. That was a little nudge. Doesn't matter. Mr. Furch, I want to go back to something and Counselor Butler alluded to it and it's it's leading the conversation that's not paid parking. And I remember you came to us maybe a year or two ago with a quote from another elected official from outside of Jasper that I, you know, I don't want to, you know, give more credit to. But it was about the message they led with. And I forget the the actual quote, but I think that's where we should start with our community and just, I don't want to call it paid parking. I want to, we have to, we have to talk about those things that Counselor Butler referred to. If you can help me out with that.
Sir, Mr. Chairperson, so I guess what the other community, which I don't know if you want to name it or not, what they learned after their public consultation was a message that they would have liked to have led with. So Counselor Butler touched on that equitable funding of the programs, but they wanted to just make it more simple. And the fact is that it costs money to pave, it costs money to paint lines, it costs money to put sand down, plow the snow, pick up the sand. All those things cost a lot of money. And the question really is when someone asks, you know, do you want paid parking or not? The response is you already pay for all of those services from your home property taxes and businesses pay from their business taxes for all those services. Do you want the visitor population to help you pay for that? And if the answer is no, then it just goes back to the model it is now where the residents and the businesses pay for all those services. So really, do you want all of those cars and trucks that come into Jasper to help share some of those costs? Or do you want to pay for it out of your property taxes? That's as simple as it gets. And that's what they said they wish they would have led with because at the end of the day, it was voted down and it's just back on the property owners to pay for all of that versus the people that come to town using it.
Right. And and I appreciate that information. And I think that's something that's very important. And it's not that I want to go and dupe our residents into another way of thinking because in essence, you know, to push something forward, it's not a negative thing that council is trying to do. They're trying to help residents and and commercial taxpayers out with the level of stress that's put on the community and what we have to do in that hundred million dollars over the the next foreseeable future to replace all the infrastructure on there. And the areas that are more used or highly used by visitors, wouldn't it be better to get into the mindset like, we're already paying for all of that. So yes, I, as as a local taxpayer, I would like to see some relief if somebody else is using something more than I am. So and that goes for anything. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Demota. This generally I I am interested in a recommendation or a direction that is just slightly different than the recommendation presented to us. I agree with the earlier comments that the issue of paid parking is inextricably tied to the financial health of our community and to the budget. And so while I accept that public engagement on the topic is necessary and important, I do not accept that it could possibly be a standalone item for the for the reasons that have already been discussed. The reality is, as Mr. Virchow just indicated, that public parking in Jasper is not free. That's that's a fallacy. We we pay for it. Our community pays for it. And as Mr. Virtus said, the question is, do you want to keep paying entirely out of your own pocket? Or would you like some equity in this situation? That cannot be divorced from our our financial issues in the budget. So what I would like to see is something presented in this year's budget to spur that discussion, the discussion about paid parking in the context of the overall budget, not as a standalone. That doesn't mean that it will necessarily be implemented, but if it if it could be made to be part of the budget discussion now, at least we get this conversation going. I fear that it will, as I said previously, just get continually kicked down the road and we we have an opportunity now by circumstances to really get this discussion going as part of our budget. And so being sensitive and perhaps not as sensitive or as knowledgeable as I as I could be on staff time, I do recognize that maybe it's too much of an ask to have something presented for consideration in the 2021 budget. So the the recommendation is, would you like to implement it? Well, I would like it to be implemented for discussion. That doesn't mean that council would necessarily agree that we're going to convert to to paid parking, but to make it part of the budget discussion seems to me to be the way to proceed. Otherwise, if we if we go through the budget without it and then start the conversation, I fear that we risk that whole thing coming down to what Counselor Butler said earlier, I've not the least bit interested in paid parking. It has to be viewed in context and the context is equity in how we finance our operations. So I am very much in favor if staff has the the time to at least present something in the 2021 budget for consideration. That is not to prejudge whether or not council would would in the end approve that. But at least to get this discussion going in that context, I think is the position that I would support.
Well, I like what the mayor has suggested. And maybe part of that is reaching out to the three groups that came to us and maybe asking for a quote on what it could look like for an assessment, unless it's the will of council who had enough time to review all of those and have someone in mind and just go, well, we'd like to see what those guys have to just regardless of of what that that quote might look like. So maybe the numbers would look better if we put in our P out for that one. But I would like to to move a little harder and just say, let's pick one, get that, get some sort of reporting done here because I want to look at other areas of use that aren't on the beaten path, but some of the areas that kind of get beat up for parking during some peak season and peak rush times as far as permitting goes. And I think somebody will be able to to provide that. It's already in the details of the conversation. So if there's some of it that alluded to it in our transportation study, so regardless of how some councils feel that that's not a valid thing, there could be some positives that came out of that. I know we discussed it at at Traffic Advisory Committee in the past. So there's a lot of information there. I don't know if it's the will of council to pick somebody and go ahead with it, but I think the harder we start pushing towards getting to a closer idea as opposed to giving administration direction to run around and try to figure stuff out and and get stuff. I think it'd be way easier if we went with something that we liked and then go get these guys, let's go. Mr. Furch.
Mr. Chair, I think the mayor probably summed it up best to what we're looking for today is just, you know, with council had the presentations, you know, it is in the strap line, but we are aware that is a COVID year and that, you know, talking about charging somebody that's coming to spend money in Jasper, any more money is probably not a good year for that. But it was the the idea is that we were looking for some direction from council today that we'd like to continue with working on this and including it in the budget process, not necessarily coming up with a decision or getting into the detail or anything, but simply to narrow this discussion down. Would you like us to continue to pursue this and include it in the budget process with all of that stuff yet to be defined or not, or just drop it for the 2021 year? So that's really all we wanted to achieve with this report today.
Thank you, Mr. Furch. Mr. Counselor Butler.
Well, it's a good conversation and it's interesting. And while some of what Mayor Ireland proposed contradicts where I was going, I I don't disagree. If we can go down this road and improve equity equity and obtain a positive financial impact overall to the community, then there's no place where that conversation more belongs and no place where those advantages would be more clear than in a budget. If we can show in a budget that we anticipate, even though we probably will be guessing because you have to start somewhere, we can anticipate X amount of income. Then because of the way the budget process works, we can clearly demonstrate that that is money that will not be coming out of the tax base. So I guess I was proposing, well, maybe we kind of try to end up with that conversation. The mayor is saying, well, maybe we should kind of try to start with that conversation. So if administration is, and I'm detecting a note of sort of enthusiasm for it, if administration is does think that we could have some kind of projected income number in time to talk about this year's budget, then certainly I wouldn't be against it. So meeting of the minds to some extent, I think.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. And I appreciate both the those conversation additions and and that enthusiasm coming forward. So I got a general consensus from council that that was just talked about that we're okay with going ahead with. And that is part of what we want to see in the budget process. Okay, so having said that, I appreciate the conversation on that. That moves us to budget or budget. Agenda item eight point four. Now we're at the other hour and a half mark since our last break. How's everybody doing right now? Keep going. Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate your earlier attempt to to give us some sort of a schedule. And despite your best efforts, although we got through the first five items of the agenda in rapid time, I I can't imagine being done even within an hour. And I I think that we should consider the needs of staff in particular, but our own needs as well. It might be appropriate. I I don't know what others have on the afternoon agenda, but it might be appropriate to take a break and get some sustenance, because what we have coming is still difficult stuff, and it's going to take some time.
Yeah, I appreciate your leadership on that. So how about if suggested come back at 1:15, does that give people enough time to take care of what they need and take care of their substance, sustenance, and get back? Or is that too rushed? Forty forty-five minutes is good. Okay, so then I will call for a recess at, I guess it's 12:29, we can call it 12:30, and we can report back here to commence at 1:45 PM. 1:15. The clock is spinning. He's giving me crap because I can't get the time right. All right, thank you. Welcome back, everyone. It's 1:19. We're a little behind schedule. We'll just blame it on the weather. It's a little colder to get back here. Before we left, we just finished up a conversation on Agenda Item 8.3. That moves us to Agenda Item 8.4. We have a discussion piece here on the Bylaw Enforcement Services Staff Designation. And that was a late addition. So if anybody did look at our agenda or downloaded prior to October 10th, you might have the wrong version. So whatever's on our website now is is the most available. It's the most up to date available. So Mr. Virchow, do we start this conversation with you, or is Mr. Jones going to address this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairperson, I'll just give a brief overview, and Mr. Jones is available for questions. So council has had a number of presentations at length and in detail on this, so I'll keep it brief for today. What we're looking for really is in the recommendation section, two things is that council direct administration to include funding, which is in the report to the 2021 operating budget to support the transition to CPO ones for the bylaw staff and the council direct administration, then to further maintain the current service levels by restricting officers' ability to enforce to the Community Peace Officer Level Two, the CPO Two level that we currently are at. So you'd see no change in service. But as council is aware, the CPO Two designation is no longer available as of the end of this year. So any new bylaw officers that are hired, should we have to hire anybody, would come in at an MCO level? Or if we want to start planning for the transition to train up to a CPO One level, that is going to take some work ahead and should be included in the budget. So just in the background, December 3rd, council deferred the decision, implementing a decision like council talked about. They would make a decision sometime before the required August 21 2021 date, but that would be the implementation of the decision. So council had talked about making a decision prior, but implementing the decision August 2021. So as we're preparing the budget, what we're looking for is the decision if we could get it on October 20th. In that way, we could add the funding for that movement in the 2021 budget for the council's budget discussions going forward for next year. And I think that is all the information I was going to present here, and we'd just be available for questions. So the just for comparison purposes, communities such as Banff, Camarn, Hinton all have CPO One officers. Just a reminder, ours are CPO Twos, and that will no longer exist as of the end of this year. So it's either CPO One or MCOs, municipal compliance officers with a substantially lower level of service available to council for bylaw enforcement. The total budget request would be for an additional $23,200. And the breakdown there is is just included and out in the financial request of the of the budget document here in front of you. So that's all I had for council, and then we are available for questions. And the decision would be next week on the 20th. This is just if this is enough information for you. If you need more information, or if you have any questions now, then we can prepare so that council can make a decision on the 20th.
All right, thank you for the reviewing the information there and the background update. Would anyone like to ask questions of administration on this coming back to us? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor DeMota. Two questions. Firstly, do we know or could we get a list of those bylaws which we currently have, which could not be enforced by a municipal compliance officer?
Your worship, that actually is a question I had anticipated. So, Mr. Jones, if you're ready for that one.
Mr. Chairperson, Chairperson through to the mayor. When you say which bylaws, or you're saying what the MCO wouldn't be able to do compared to what a peace officer, all our bylaws have a peace officer and an MCO definition in them, so there would be no difference with regards to being able able to enforce them. The abilities surrounding how they would enforcement and what options they have open to them is a different matter. So I just, if I could get some clarification on that, please.
Well, thank you for that. I just reading the request for decision, I I interpreted perhaps incorrectly to suggest that we would have to review all of our bylaws if we didn't increase to CPO One, because there were some bylaws that we now have that couldn't be enforced, or at least couldn't be enforced in the same way as they now are. So our service levels would change. Are you saying that as long as we change the overall parameters in our in our primary bylaw, appointing officers, that we would solve that problem? Or will we wind up with a real problem? Like an actual problem with enforcement of such things as, for example, the compulsory face covering bylaw? Could that be enforced, if it was going to be enforced at all, by an MCO as well as a CPO?
Yeah, go ahead, Neil. I just, before you, just on that specific question, I guess what I'd want to say before Neil answers that is what we're looking for is the designation to go to a CPO One, because that's all that's available to then allow our officers to stay at the CPO Two level of enforcement. So you'd, to go to a CPO One means no change in level of service. To drop to an MCO would mean a decrease in the available level of service for enforcement in the community. And I'll have Neil respond to your face mask covering one, but the one that really comes to mind is, for example, the ability to enforce illegal camping in town would be an extremely big change in our ability to deal with that. We simply would be hard pressed to deal with that, whereas we have quite a number of those issues to deal with each year. So it's it's a question of same level of service or lower level of service. And and I guess on the, Neil, if you could handle the question on the face mask covering as well.
Mr. Chairperson through to the mayor. I do apologize, sir. With regards to the the bylaws, there are certain things in there with regards to referring to peace officers that would need to be changed with regards to how the ability with the services or to be able to enforce those bylaws with the what we would lose if we went down to MCOs, that would be a different thing altogether with the face masks. We, as MCO, we can still enforce those bylaws. But with regards to, for instance, identify the person we're dealing with, that would be reduced, if I could just sort of clarify with the regards to the differences in the abilities with regards to MCOs. There are three areas that would be affected, the compliance, safety, and the financial. As you know, the bylaw department attempts to gain voluntary compliance to our terms by bylaws. One of the main tools a peace officer has in attempting to get compliance is vehicle information. Officer obtains that through the provincial radio control center. Now, if a peace officer is able to gain access to that, but an MCO would not be able to gain access. So be unable to trace vehicle license plates, to do things such as move vehicles for snow removal, street sweeping, find owners of vehicles with distressed animals inside, or locate owners of vehicles parked abandoned, or block in alleyways, driveways, or crosswalks. Then we have things like peace officers that can use the provincial laws to bolster our town bylaws. And then MCOs would not be able to use provincial laws to assist municipal bylaws. For instance, the smoking bylaws has no provision for smoking near doors and windows, but the provincial law does. With regards to the safety aspects for the difference between peace officers and MCOs, a very simple example of safety implications is the loss of emergency lights on our duty vehicles. At the present, we have standard red and blue lights on both our vehicles. MCOs would need to revert to the yellow lights. On numerous occasions, the operations department has requested our assistance to help them on road closures. As some drivers tend to ignore their yellow lights and go around the closures endangering the workers. This type of attitude by the drivers would be an issue when MCOs are stopped in the road dealing with the traffic issues if they're just using yellow lights and when they're assisting other departments. The safety implications are not just restricted to officers, but also our customers. A peace officer is able to remove a distressed dog from a hot vehicle, and MCOs not. They would need to wait for the RCMP to assist, and as you know, RCMP's have other things to do, and sometimes they've been down the Icefield Parkway a couple hours away. And therefore, delay, that delay could cause loss of dog and also risk any members of public who may take that as in their own hands and possibly injure themselves entering the vehicle by breaking windows and possibly being bitten by the agitated dog within. And finally, the financial side of things. Again, this may be more information you wanted, but I thought I'll throw it your way anyway. The when a municipal ticket goes unpaid, the peace officer send provincials tickets to the non-payers. Now, MCOs are not able to issue provincial tickets and would not be able to use them to encourage payment. So that would be so between, say, 2016 and 2018, municipal tickets were issued to the amount of $245,000. $53,000 of that amount went unpaid. MCOs would have no way of recovering this money, but a peace officer would. Now, if that, or when the public become aware of this weakness with regard to enforcement of those municipal tickets, the municipal ticket will lose its value as a compliance tool. I do have, I did submit a 30-page report to council back in November, so and that outlines a lot of more examples if you if you require them, or I can answer more questions if you if you need any more clarification.
If I may.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead, please.
Thank you for that, Mr. Jones. And I I'm not so much concerned about the rationale for why we might go to CPO Level One. It seems to me there are three options. CPO Level One, acting as such, or CPO Level One, but still restricted to Level Two type duties, or MCO. And under the options, the the indication in the report is that the option of going to MCO will have noticeable impacts on service levels as MCOs are not considered to be trained to a sufficient standard by the Alberta Solicitor General to safely perform the day-to-day duties of a community peace officer. So I read into that that there would be some things that they simply cannot do. And so this all started with a case of an officer enforcing, I think, a domestic animal bylaw. Would that mean, for example, then, that if we had only MCOs, we might as well repeal our domestic animal bylaw and be done with it because an MCO can't enforce it? And are there other bylaws, whether it's compulsory face covering bylaw or anything else? Are there those types of bylaws that we would just as well abandon entirely if we only had MCOs?
Mr. Chairperson through to the mayor. We would need to drastically improve them. The smoking bylaw, for instance, is for buildings and vehicles where we do get complaints with regards to smoking near near windows and doors. So we'd have to reinforce the smoking bylaw. The domestic animal part of it is not so much the domestic animal with regards to enforcing it, but things like dogs in in cars. For instance, we, as as said in the example, as a peace officer, we're able to after due diligence with regards to finding the owner, we can enter that car and remove the animal. Now, that's something that an MCO can't do. So that, again, there would be something we'd have to look at the bylaws to see if we could reinforce that one. And and also some of the identification procedures with with the abilities MCOs. We have a more robust ability to identify somebody or request identification through provincial laws than we do with the municipal law. So there would be some rewriting to either put in place anything that was missing as regard of going to to MCOs instead of peace officers, or even, as you said, looking at those particular bylaws and seeing if we are we are able to indeed enforce those ones, and we'd have to either, well, get rid of them, to be honest. I can't think of one off the top of my head at the moment, but there are instances where it would be difficult to, for instance, dogs, again, I go back to the dogs in vehicles, a good example. We we could not do anything apart from go the vehicle and record and report to the RCMP as we we could not enter the vehicle. I hope that helps.
You satisfied? Okay. I might have a question.
I might have a question here just because it's just a matter of clarification for me and just reading the recommendations because within the actual recommendations part, and I guess maybe I'll be directing this through Mr. Fritsch to you, Mr. Jones. Because the, we have the, the two points under the recommendations and then under the background, there's also a recommendation to where there is a breakdown of what we're currently paying for CPO level twos and what CPO level ones in other communities range. And so there's a minimum of a $6,000 to and $9,000 shift there. But at the end of that, the recommendations on the CPO rage wage stay the same. And even though it'll take a little bit of funding towards increasing the level to the level one by 20, so about roughly $11,600 per officer. When you'd be hiring somebody to attract them into a position, they could potentially be making more than somebody who was already here that's kind of put their time in the community. So I'm having a hard time understanding that. Did that make any sense at all? So basically, I guess for this year, you're asking to be for funding to get upgraded to a CPO level one from CPO level two, but keep the same salaries?
Mr. Jones, that's correct. We are trying, we are trying to lessen the impact on the budget with, with regards to the wages and find different ways of encouraging recruitment. And one of those would be instead of increasing the wages to keep it as it is and move them up the grid based on their experience. And that's the big thing is based on their experience. If they are not CPO ones with experience, then they would come in at the entry level and they wouldn't. And so that would sort of take away that problem with regards to a person already being in situ and being paid lower than that, the person we've recruited, because that person would have the experience of being a CPO one. And the current people, current employees have not and will not until the end of next year if if all goes to CPO. Hope that helps.
Okay, I guess I don't want to drill too deeply. It's just, I'm just looking at the, the level of compensation. So if we run into a season where we might have difficulty in attracting a CPO level one and we might have someone with some security or some other type of background, it would take us at least $10,000 to have that person trained. And, and, and then, you know, and then the additional equipment, would it be new for every officer? And would that be the scenario every time? Or is, are there enough CPOs out, CPO ones out there that will never have a hard time attracting them to the community?
This change in CPO one is, is a totally new. So I would be guessing with regards to how the recruitment would, would go with regards to training costs. Now, if there are CPO ones all already, then it would be a case of the wage, of course, and the equipment, which is not, if we have it already in place, is not a big expense with the training, if they weren't trained already. Because they're, because they're coming in and they would be coming in next year, they would have to go through the academy. And the academy at the moment is, although it has been, there will be an increase in the academy and that is for six weeks training. Anything, at the moment, they go between anything between $6 and $10,000, but they are looking to they're, they're looking at the expenses on that one. It's at the moment it's 6,000, but I, I believe that going by the information I'm getting, that that could increase, especially because, because everybody will need to be CPO ones and there'll be a a seller's market more than a buyer's market, shall we say.
Right. Okay. And so that's why that there is that deadline to the end of 2022 to have that all completed. So for the next two summers at least, how would that reflect in having seasonal staff? If the rest of council doesn't mind me asking, Council McGrath, I've got you up next after this. And then Counselor Butler. Seasonal staff. Would, how does that affect things? Would we be hiring people as MCOs plus have CPO ones in the community just to fulfill that? Or will there be a requirement going forward after making, if this decision goes to where you want it, where you would like it to go? How does that work for seasonal staff, I guess, to be clear?
Mr. Jones, if it remains the same format as we had in 2019, you'd have the two CPO one working as to the CPO two level. And then we would, if allowed, take on a summer MCO as we would usually do. So there shouldn't, there wouldn't be any change to the service level. It would just be the, the abilities of the peace officers or the training that peace officers would need. The seasonal staff, if we take them on, would remain as MCOs.
Okay, that's great. And then that would also include moving into 2023. At the way the current structure is set up, we would still be able to hire MCOs. It wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to necessarily hire a CPO one for a summer fill in.
We have, sorry, Mr. Jones, we have control of who we employ. The only control that the province has with regards to who we employ or what is the level of who we employ. In other words, if we, if we have peace officers, then they have to be trained to a certain level to be given a peace officer appointment. And then what, and then we decide from then on, once we've been given that permission, what appointments, that what they have, their appointments with regards to what we want them to enforce with provincial or what we want them to use through the provincial statutes to bolster our bylaws and how they do it. The only control, as far as I am aware, and I, I'm open to be corrected, is they, the they have control of whether or not we're allowed to employ peace officers. And that's it. The MCOs and how many peace officers and how many MCOs is totally within our control. They only have whether or not we are allowed to have peace officers, their level of training, what equipment they have.
Okay, good. I was clear on that. I just wanted to make sure that prior or after 2023 that we were still allowed to hire MCOs. So that's good. Counselor McGrath had some questions? Or a question?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. Not so much a question, more a comment and an observation. And I'm not surprised by this information because as the report mentions, we've had this before us since September 2019. And we were given a lot of information on this back to Neil's, or sorry, Mr. Jones's 30 page report that was given to us last November. But I am shocked to see this as a late agenda item over the weekend. And the timing that we're expected to make a decision next week. I'm dissatisfied with the way that this is being presented to us and I'm concerned by it. The magnitude of this decision is huge for the entire organization as well as the entire community. I will certainly not be ready next week to make a decision on this. I would not support council making a decision on this next week, though I understand administration's rationale and seeking this information before we move into budget season. I would suggest, just as other departments plan for a worst case scenario, as we discussed with many other items this morning, adding a $23,000 buffer to get through this to buy us more time. And I certainly would not be making a decision in favor of this recommendation next week.
Thank you for that, Counselor McGrath. Counselor Butler?
Thank you. I have a few questions. All of them are to clarify the wording in the RFD or to fill in blanks. And the first would be just to follow up on Counselor McGrath's point, which was, given that we had said we would revisit this in August, why is it only coming back now so late?
Mr. Fritsch through you to Mr.
I realize I should direct the question and I apologize. So Deputy Mayor Demota through to Mr. Fritsch or whoever he might designate to answer. That'll be the case with all of these questions.
Maybe I'll just handle that one. Just in regards to this report, it was kind of more along the lines, I guess, of sort of what we talked about with paid parking. It's more like, do we want to include this in the budget process for the year coming up? Because although with, you know, as, as Counselor McGrath had mentioned, you, council has had numerous reports on this and council was aware that they weren't in a place to make a decision. It is a big decision. And the implementation of that decision would be in August 2021. That was the target date of implementing the decision is what council had agreed to. However, at some point before that time, council would make a decision on which way to go. It's just that the implementation would be delayed. That was how we stepped through that. What we're talking about here is whether or not council is ready to make a decision in order for us to put in. And as you mentioned, it's a notional amount, $23,000 into the budget for the training purposes and then giving us some indication of what we would do going forward as a program. But there is a lot more to it. But certainly didn't want to surprise council by including that item in the budget should we have not had this conversation. So that's kind of what we were looking for is keeping this conversation more to that level versus anything greater than that. It's just preparing for the upcoming budget and things that were left untied, we're trying to tie up before we finalize the budget and get it to council. So there's not surprises. That's really, I guess, what I'd say in a nutshell here.
Okay, thank you. May I?
Absolutely.
So in the second bullet under recommendations, there's a recommendation that council would limit under the scenario where we would raise the designation to CPO one, that we would limit through policy enforcement activities to level two type activities by policy. And I'm happy to see this recognized as a policy question because that is what it should be. But my question is, what is the policy context for the fact that we now are operating with CPOs? So I've read through bylaw 45. There is no mention at all of CPOs there. I take that to be the governing policy document and it is written entirely from the standpoint of bylaw enforcement officers. So while we're being told that we can limit the activity enforcement activities through policy, what I don't really understand is where's the policy that got us here in the first place? And any light that could be shed on that would be helpful context for me.
Mr. Jones, you have a ready answer, otherwise I can take that one.
Unfortunately, I don't have a ready answer for that when I've always worked from the bylaw officers by law and from the training that I've received and the requirements and instructions I've received from past licensed enforcement managers and from CAOs and from directors of protective services as to how we should act and enforce.
Maybe I'll just take that one then. Is the, I guess what, and just make sure that I have your question right. So how did we get to this place where we have CPO twos in Jasper? Would be the question, or do you mean how we would restrict them? So I guess what administration's saying is the, we currently have a CPO two level officer, which is community peace officer level two, that is not going to be in existence and under the provincial regime for community peace officers as of the end of this year. In order to maintain the current level of service and capability of the officer, we only have one choice and that is to move up to a CPO level one. But then not go to all of the enforcement that could be done by a CPO level one, but by restricting it. And under policy, that's the letter of appointments that there has the language in there or what the officer can and can't do. That you wouldn't see that in the bylaws. It's a separate piece of paper that restricts the activities of what the officers are able to do. And that's how we would bring them down to the level two officer. And that would simply be maintaining the level of service that we currently have. That's about all the information that I can give you right away if I understood the question correctly.
Well, I understand that. Thank you, Mr. Fritsch. But my question is more, if we're being, if it's being proposed that we would limit enforcement to the CPO one level. And I've read all the policy documentation that I can find relative to our policy around bylaw enforcement. And I don't actually see where there was ever a policy decision made to say that we would have peace officers and enforcement. We know that we have discussed at this table a year ago and earlier where our bylaw department was doing enforcement even at frankly, a provincial level. I understand that that has been rectified and we're not doing that anymore. But are we operating under a policy which determined that we would move from basically an MCO level kind of enforcement, which is what I read into our bylaw, up to a CPO level enforcement? And that, that, you know, the resulting changes to uniform, to practice, to vehicles, red and blue lights and all of that. Because I don't see where, I can't see policy that drove that change. I know that there was a few, a few years ago, we began to see CPOs in the community. And prior to that, we did not have CPOs in the community, but I, I can't see the policy context for that change.
Okay, I think I understand the question. So what we'll do is we'll try to look back on the records and find out when that decision was made. I guess if there's some information available around that decision, that's about, I guess, what, what you're looking for is when was that change made and where is that documentation from the bylaw services of Jasper's municipality to having the CPO enforcement capability? That change occurred sometime. It occurred prior to when I started. So I don't know that off the top of my head, but we could certainly look for that.
Well, and the when of it is not that important to me. We are where we are. But what is important to me is whether that was in response to a council driven policy. In a couple of places on the RFD, there's references to noticeable impacts on service levels and and a substantial change in current service level. So my question is probably for Mr. Jones. How would a average resident experience that reduction in service? How would an average resident feel his community was different? What would be the detractions to how an average resident would experience the community if we were to go with MCO enforcement?
Mr. Chairperson through to Counselor Butler. As I outlined in my response to the mayor, the big thing would be compliance. It would be an the big thing would be compliance, it would be an increase in the amount of tickets compared to the amount of voluntary enforcement. Where, for instance, street snow removal, we are able as peace officers to trace the plate of the vehicle that is obstructing the street, sorry, the snow removal or street sweeping. And through that, contact the owner and arrange for it to be moved. Whereas as an MCO, we aren't able to do that. So one of the only things is to knock on a door, which has its own safety considerations, or drop a ticket on it and move on to the next, which would mean that, A, the poor person that maybe have gone to work and missed the signs has got a ticket and a nice fine to go with it. And the roads would not be swept or cleared to the quality that they're used to. So we do have a number of vehicles that we moved for snow removal and they would be a substantial reduction in their ability to clear the streets. The other thing would be for simple things like a vehicle blocking the driveway, for instance. Again, it comes down to tracing that plate and getting the vehicle moved. Or all I do, MCO would be able to do is again, drop a ticket on it, but that wouldn't help the homeowner get out of his driveway. For instance, we've had a few instances where we've traced the plate, got hold of the the owner of the vehicle and arranged for it, range for the vehicle to be moved. And that person or the homeowner was able to get out of their driveway and get to work on time. This is something we wouldn't be able to do. Again, the smoking, I'll go back to, it's an easy one. We're able to enforce distances from windows when it comes to smoking, windows and doors. This is something that MCOs wouldn't be able to do. They would only be able to do in, they're only restricted to the bylaw itself. So I think there would be considerable change in the service or the ways that we provide those services to the community. If we went to MCOs, imagine that they'd get used to it. But it's not the way that I've come to know how to enforce these bylaws through sort of understanding and the ability to be able to get voluntary compliance for some of these infractions, whereas for the MCO, we would just be resorting to tickets, which is something I would be uncomfortable for this department to go to. As I've said before, when I was a peace officer or bylaw officer roaming around the town, dealing with these things, the best day was a zero-ticket day. That's not to say that wasn't working, but it just meant I was able to gain compliance and solve the problems of the public through that voluntary compliance, because I had those tools available to me to move those vehicles, find, finds, find the person with the dog in the car instead of getting it towed. So it's, it's the way and the mode and the ethos of the whole bylaw department would be changed because we wouldn't be able to get that voluntary compliance that everybody's become used to. And again, I would be very uncomfortable not being able to enforce with that level of understanding and the ability to get that compliance without resorting to the unpleasantness of tickets and maybe caught. I hope that helps.
Okay. I have one last question and I hope it's a short one, thank you. And thank you for that, I realize that you really reiterated what you had provided for other questions asked earlier, Mr. Jones and I. I apologized, I thought there might be a little bit different view to the question I asked, but I realize it's really the same answer and fair enough to what Mayor Ireland had asked. My last question is, you mentioned three communities that employ CPO level one officers, but what communities don't, what communities employ MCOs?
Mr. Chairperson through to Council Butler. I went through the local communities and similar communities, which was Banff, Canmore and next door to Hinton. I didn't get as far as Edson, I know Edson used to have a combination of CPO1s and MCOs. I don't believe they had CPO2s, so I'd have to do a bit more research to find out who doesn't use peace officers. I know we are ordering the BC, so the neighboring communities, they do not have peace officer designations as we do in Alberta.
Okay, fair enough, I thought you might have off the top of your head some examples of communities that don't use peace officers, but that answers all my questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Butler, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota, first on a point of order. It seems to me that if we discount our long lunch recess, we're not yet at four hours, but pursuant to section 20.6 of our procedural bylaw, we are about, we're getting close to exceeding four hours and we need a motion to do that. So unless we forget again, I would make that motion now that we consent to have this meeting extend beyond four hours.
Mayor Ireland has a motion on the floor, does everybody understand the motion? All in favor? Carried.
And that I did have one further question, if I may.
By all means.
Mr. Fritschel to you and if necessary through you to whomever I, I appreciate that things may have changed since whenever it was, a year or so ago, when council agreed to defer this question until August of 2021. And I appreciate that there was a very thorough report presented to council some time ago, and I can't remember all the details of it, but it seems to me that what may have changed is the timing. So this issue is before us now, as I understand, because even though we have said we want to revisit this in August of 2021, the indication in today's RFD is that we might have to spend money before that and it should be in, it should be in the budget. But I just, I want to focus on that very narrow question. Working backwards, I understand how administration has worked out the date. So there's an end date of December 31st of 2022. There's a requirement of six months of training, which takes us back to the end of June of 2022 to have the modules done. The current RFD says that those modules must be completed within 12 months. And there is an assumption then that they must start in June of 2021. But I question whether that is a necessary assumption. In other words, could the modules be completed in less than 12 months? It's clear that they can't go over 12 months. But if they could be completed more quickly than 12 months, it seems to me possible that this decision could be deferred until budget 2022. It would of course compress the time in which our staff had the ability to take the courses and the modules. But if those modules can all be completed within six months, it's possible. And I'm not saying that this is necessarily my recommended position, but it's possible that it could all be done in the 2022 budget year. So I would just like to know whether assumptions have been made that it has to start in June of 2021. And is that simply an assumption or is that fact?
Mr. Jones, you want to take that one?
The, it's basically given us some breathing space because there is a, we're assuming that there are going to be quite a few communities jumping on the limited service providers for the, for these courses. At the moment, I found two service providers for the whole of Alberta. And they are doing limited courses through the year to the point that I have seen them posted at the moment. So when they do eventually get posted, I'm assuming that the other towns and agencies will be jumping on that bandwagon to get their CPO2s brought up to the CPO1 level. We are still waiting for the legal study side of that as well. So it's a possibility that we could get it done quicker in an ideal world, whether or not those courses are available in the ideal world is something that is, that I can't predict. I'm going by what I believe is, would be again, a seller's market and lots of buyers out there, they want to get themselves in their first, especially when we get closer to the drop dead date, for want of a better word. So we really, really need to take that into account when we decide how far we could push this back.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and that's kind of the next question I was gonna ask, so I'm glad that got clarified. Council Butler has a question or line of thought?
Yeah, it's not a question, it's an apology. I misread a piece and when I asked the question, why has this come so late? Possibly with a chippy tone, I misread, I thought the part where it said that this was going to come back to us in August 2021. I understood that it was intended to come back to us in August 2020, a couple of months ago, and it was only now coming back to us with a short decision date, I completely muffed that. So where I said, why has this come so late? I just completely missed that, so I apologize for that. Context of the dates is now completely important, clear to me.
All right, so moving forward, do we have, are we giving any direction to administration to come back to us with anything for next week? I had some notes written down here and then it looks like the questions got answered, unless it's, there's still some desire to look on decision and documentation and move in our compliance officers in regards to our policies. I know that you'd brought that up, is there still a desire to get some information on that?
Well, I think Mr. Fritschel said he would look into my question with respect to providing some policy context, if there is any, or if there isn't really a policy context that we would know that. But there's nothing else that I needed, like, all the questions I asked have been answered, thank you.
Councilor Keller MP.
Rather than making a decision on all the departments, like every year people take training, like, and if what I see here is the greatest concern is about removal of vehicles, animals and cars, like, so if Mr. Jones was trained to a level one, operating as a level two, there's somebody in the department that has that qualification that during the week with Mr. Jones, it's covered. And on the weekend, if Mr. Jones is not there, then the MCO, if they're not able to do something, contact the RCMP. It doesn't have to be an all or nothing, but is it something that like Mr. Jones as the manager of the department, maybe he should have the qualification? And then as we move forward and what the decision of council is as we go forward and with budgets later down the road?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Fritschel, you have a response?
Mr. Chairperson through to Councilor Keller MP, and actually this is to all of council, I guess maybe my apologies, maybe if I was more, spent more time on just the recommendation. Council's really digging into the actual decision around the CPO to MCO. What we're looking for is, we're trying to prepare for the budget and we don't want to surprise council with what is and not, what is included, not included. So the recommendation is that council direct administration to include funding in the 2021 operating budget to support the transition to CPO level ones. So we're only asking that, are you okay that we have that extra $23,000 in the budget? And then there's still all of the conversations around budget to unfold over the next few months. And then the actual, there's a big difference between what's in the budget and what's actually expended. So way down the road could be the following decision around, much more conversation on the detail as Councilor Keller MP just brought up and all the other concerns around, actually, are we going to transition to MCOs from CPOs or CPOs ones from CPO2s? Like, all of that can unfold, this, like I said, this is more like along that light level we just had with the bylaw with the parking, there's a whole bunch of stuff to talk about with parking. We're not going to get into that here, it's simply, should we include that in the budget process or not? And we don't want to surprise council, so we're just looking for some direction next week on whether we include that in the budget discussions or not. And the second bullet is really just maintaining council's comfort level that we're not looking to amp up to a CPO level one enforcement. But any, any level one designation change would be throttled back down to a CPO level two. So we're just maintaining a current level of service. So put the number in the budget, the service level won't change, that's all we're looking for at this stage. Much, much more conversation and decisions to come, just like with paid parking.
Council McGrath?
Thank you very much, Mr. Fritschel, for that really important clarification. As stated, when I expressed my concerns with this being here today, I would support a buffer of $23,000 being added to the budget. I think that that's responsible and reasonable. And I would like to carry on the conversation in which direction we'd like the organization to go in at a later date.
I'm okay with that. Is everyone else comfortable with, even though we're not able to make a decision today with the idea of having that introduced into the budget plans? Okay, so having no response, I'm gonna guess that that is the sentiment, or a couple of responses anyway. I think maybe we should just jump into the middle of the room and start doing some jumping jacks together, socially distanced, of course, and masks on, to maybe generate a little bit more energy. Sorry if it is, this can be boring for some people. Okay, so I'm comfortable with that, we're gonna get a little bit more information coming back. And if no one else has anything else to add to the bylaw enforcement services staff designation, I'd like to move to agenda item 8.5. We're looking at 2021 service levels. Ms. Malincheck, are you happy to get back into the mix again? Okay.
Yes, thank you, here to bore you some more. So this is a recommendation that council review the service levels document that is attached to this request for direction and provide information or feedback to administration on the format and content. And that council work with administration to identify which additional information is required to assist council in making the decisions around service levels for the upcoming budget year. And then we're hoping that council can use this document to narrow down which areas of the municipality's budget, the operating budget, should be researched and detailed further by administration to host the conversations. This developed- This developed summarized, I'll call it service plan now, by department, is a listing of each municipal service provided and the department level budget to be used as a tool for council administration to discuss the targets that council wished to put into motion. And it's to paint a broad picture of where the municipality tax dollars are located, allocated, and which services they support. Now, what we did right now is we kept it the same for now, the attachment. And keep in mind, the financial information presented on it is based on 2019 operating budget. Kept it the same for a few reasons. One, because council just seen it for the very first time last week and maybe had more time to look over it and decide maybe some things that might assist in making the decisions going forward. And also, I guess I just had some ideas of where to go with the presentation and the format. And I thought it might be best to run it by council to see if there are, if they are ideas that council might be interested in seeing, so that I could prepare something a bit more detailed, so that the conversations could be had. Now, what I was looking at, and this is also, it was also kept the same because I heard from the mayor last week that there was an idea surrounded wanting to see the percentage based on the budget, which then I didn't see everyone saying that they wanted to see that. So I thought I would run it by council to see if that would be something that would interest council as a whole. That would basically entail breaking down each service level. So say you look at the documentation on page 41, and the first one is finance administration is broken down into ledge and then into communications and then into council. And whether or not you would want to see each area, the expense that each area has, and then which portion is covered by grant or user fees. And then that would give you the percentage based off of the budget that is used or covered by grant and user fees. And then also, it would give you an idea of each area, how much is tax funded. And then that can be compared to the bottom line as well, to give you a percentage of the entire budget, but still keeping in mind that percentage of the entire tax levy that is set out as well. So that was kind of an idea that I thought might work in being able to see each area and to see how much money is covered by revenues and how much is covered by taxation. For example, if you scroll to 42, just an easy one to look at, the community Christmas party, for example, there is an expense of $10,508 is what it was at in 2019. However, there is a user fee attached to that. So there is revenue. It's $5,200. So that offsets what is needed to be covered by the tax dollar. So in the end, you know, we're only looking at 0.07% of the whole levy, but then we can also break it down and look at each what the percentage is to the budget. And the budget, the final number is without any of the utilities attached to it, and we can look at those separately. And without any of the requisitions attached to it, other than Parks, Canada Land Use rent and planning. Is 15 less, or in 2019, was 15,675 or 76,000. So if that level of detail is, if that interests council to look at the revenue and the expense and what is covered by taxes and what is covered by that user fee or grants, because in the end, it comes down to about close to 50% on each end of tax covered and user fees covered. So that was one of the things that I was thinking of, although it might be more too much information. So I don't want to give too much information if not requested. And then that being said, there's also some things we were discussing. Sorry, I'm just getting back to my other document. On service levels, now this also ties into the next request for direction on the, or decision on the budget itself. And council indicated that you would like to discuss the 2019 tax year. However, I'm curious if council would also like to hear what the numbers associated would be with any kind of costs that are hard, like the insurance, the utilities, salaries and benefits, any kind of contracts that are going up in price. What else? There's debentures and whatnot. So it's all laid out so that there's a fee that might be associated with that to see what that kind of adjustment might be to the 2019 figures going ahead. Because I know that that's the base, but there are some changes that we can't control. Also, in the very end, is some areas that were developed in 2020, for example, emergency social services and the emergency management for protective services. Those were two areas that were created in 2020, but were not part of 2019. So if we keep those going forward, it actually adds nearly 0.6% to the budget that we were talking about with the initial 2019 levy. So just some thoughts, and I'm open to suggestions. And I just want to host a conversation and bring back the paperwork so that the conversation can maybe be had around each department and where council members would like to see more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I appreciate the level of description there. I think some of what you're talking about might be more helpful in, at the beginning of your descriptions on the levels of tax and other funding that might be available to be included in the dropdowns. So I think CFS is probably the one where that would be the most helpful with and has been in the past because, you know, if we look at the six, the 2.69% of municipal taxes that go into providing that service, which is equivalent to $215,000. The overall cost of running that is twice that amount. So even though there isn't another column there to show the offset of other external funding, it does cost more than, you know, what we see in, in the cost of community development, wildflowers and all that, you know, and the, and the cost for community dinners. So that's where sometimes it gets, it's a little hard for us to wrap our heads around because it doesn't really cost that to run the department when it comes down to tax dollars, right? Does that make any sense?
Yes, and that's exactly what I'm hoping to show with this level of detail. It is quite a few more numbers. But it does break it down into looking at it on, this is what's tax funded, and this is what is covered by the user fee or grant money that's received.
Yeah, I think that's important because if a resident or, you know, for resident or someone that is in, on the commercial side are looking at what they're funding, I'll get to you, Mr. Butler, or Counselor Butler, I've got your, I think that's enough to hold your hand up. When you're looking at the tax contribution, let's say in my mind, if I know that $1 of my contribution is going to get me $4 worth of service, then that's worth talking about. But if it's the reverse, then that's something that we really have to buckle down on. And so having that, those two perceptions of, of providing services is healthy, I think. There was something that you brought up about the hard numbers. Does anybody else? I'll go to Mr. or to Counselor, I'm sorry that I keep saying Mr. and Mrs. first, and it's just natural for me. Yeah, okay, that's good. So Counselor Butler.
Thanks. This is Melanchuk. I'm all for more information, but I'm, and I like what I think you're suggesting. But I think we're all really concerned about make-work projects that ask you for a lot of time. And then it doesn't make a difference to our decision-making process. I get the sense we're all trying to ask for enough to make a decision and not more, but it's anyway, you mentioned both user fees and grants. But we're looking at the operations budget and there's not a lot of grants involved in the operating budget. Am I right? Or just without getting into details, like I know about the grant that we got in daycare for $25 a day, for example, but where do we see grants operationally that would be important for us to think about?
I guess where you'd see them mostly would be in the CFS department, as well as there's some in protective services. Yeah, so there are, there are some substantial dollar amounts.
Right, of course. And as soon as you said it, I realized, sure, that's also where they are. So are you suggesting that you could take this spreadsheet and add a couple of columns that would show user fees? Because that is major, particularly in culture and recreation. And another column that would show grants where they apply and that you could do that without mortgaging your life and spending the next two weeks of evenings to do it. Because I think that would be useful if that's the question. And if you could do it without going to a huge amount of trouble, I think it would help. Because there's quite a difference between looking at reducing a service that, I mean, we only see the tax implication here. So it might be pretty easy to say, well, let's cut that. There's $300,000 without realizing that, yeah, it's not, it's more complicated. So I'm in favor if it's, if you wouldn't suggest it, if you weren't prepared to do it without too much trouble.
Mr. Chair, through to Counselor Butler. Yes, so I've already started to look at it to see if it might make things easier for you to make the decisions going forward. I know that it is a hard process, so I want it to be as streamlined as possible. So I've already started the work. It's just not perfect. That's why it's not on your tables today, but I can have it ready for next week. For instance, you bring up Culture and Rec, the Fitness and Aquatic Center. Right here, just looking at it quickly, I can see that 47% of it is grant user fee, so user fee covered, and 53% is covered by taxes, taxes, based on the whole budget. So and then I also break it down by how much of the actual tax requisition would cover that portion. So it's, it's something that I want the process to be smooth. I want it to be transparent. I want it to be open. I want the conversations to be had so that we can have this really good system in place. And I've, we've been trying for many, many years to get there. And I'm hoping that this is secure. So I'm fine with it. Thank you.
That's good. And I think that I was asking, again, similar, a similar line of question. It just got clarified better. And thank you for that, Counselor Butler. What I'd also like to talk about is our, if we're going to have that column, and I just, I don't want to build back to what we had before, but user fees and grants are a form of revenue. And even though we don't consider bylaw ticketing, particularly for infractions that visitors, you know, we seem to have a spike in the warmer months in revenue that way. But that's a user fee in a weird way, but it's a revenue. So I don't want to exclude revenues on the offset of the balance. Like Counselor Butler said, we're seeing what the tax dollars are with this. But if there are revenues that are quite higher that have reduced, you know, that tax obligation or that burden by, by our residents, then that's, that's an evident and pertinent thing to have as far as information goes. Because if someone says, holy crap, that cost is $200,000 a year to run, I don't want to pay for that anymore. Well, actually, it costs 600,000 and we recover 400,000. So it doesn't cost you that much. You know, and I know that's an extreme, but those columns are, I think, are important. So, and it's not just for user fees and grant funding. Counselors, your note?
Thank you. I appreciate the progress that's being made by Ms. Malinchuk in the developmental process. And with the suggested additions that Counselor Butler has made, I think that we will have a very good tool to proceed with the 2021 budget. So thank you.
Mayor Allen?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demote. I'm not quite sure what I've heard, and therefore, I'm not quite sure what you've heard. I did my own rough math. And the column that I was looking for, say, if we take page 40, which is the overall summary, is simply comparing the expense per department against the total budget expenditures excluding utilities. So just a column, I'm not looking for a whole bunch of work and I can do the math myself. But I think the public should have access to this without doing my questionable math. But when I do it, you know, administration accounts for approximately 17% of our budget allocation and 24% of the tax requisition. For Culture and Rec, it's 24% of our budget allotment goes there and 31% of the tax requisition goes there. For FCS, it's 23% of our overall budget, but only 5.5% of the tax requisition. It's not perfect. It doesn't tell the whole story, but it does give a sense of bang for buck. And I think that's an important consideration for people. And I don't think it's a whole lot of work. And I'm not asking for a lot of work, but I think the tables are approved if that minimal bit of information is there. I like the suggestion of, of breaking out the user fee revenue as well, because you know, I don't really know what that $800,000 of revenue for administration consists of. But there might be some items of income that we might want to consider whether they're allocated properly, that is, to the right department. If that's a, that would include business licensing, I presume, but maybe, maybe that all falls under protective services because that's where bylaw is and bylaw is responsible. So I, I really don't know, but it gives us a chance also to, to kind of reallocate the revenue stream to we, to where we think it is most appropriate. And finally, it seems to me that it gives us a slightly better opportunity to benchmark against other communities to, to assess things. Again, that's not perfect because as we've seen, if you realign departments and other communities may not have a separate Culture and Rec department and a separate Community and Family Services, they might have something else. So you can't make these comparisons, but it does help judge our performance against others in the province. So all of those, I think, just assist in it, in getting an overview and then help us look at, at the budget in a harder way. The other thing I wanted to comment on, and I'm not suggesting that you do the work for this, and maybe it's something council can take up, or maybe I will just pursue it on my own. But I do like the changed terminology. And I had started on the wrong track, I think, by talking about mandatory services. And that's really not where I was going. And I think looking at hard costs and fixed costs as a budget item as opposed to mandatory is looking at hard costs and fixed costs as a budget item as opposed to mandatory is different. And so every time we look at a budget, there are some fixed costs. We have interest payments and that's not going to change. We have contractual obligations and that's not going to change. There are, there are some fixed costs. There are some, though, that are not fixed and we can start adjusting those. So if, if we had a better sense of where we are even temporarily locked in and where we have the freedom to move, that would assist. But that is a bigger chore and maybe that is uniquely a council job and we could go through this list and, and try and sort them out that way. So there are some fixed items with a fixed cost, some fixed items with a discretionary cost. Some are not fixed and some are not fixed, but if you do them, there is a cost. So we have to have insurance. I don't, we can negotiate a little bit, but we can't run this show without some insurance. So we just don't need to be dragging those discussions into the budget contemplation. Let's focus on where we can make a difference is, is where I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, and thank you for that, Mayor Ireland. Again, in the restaurant world, you call those the prime costs because you have your fixed costs and then outside of that, I don't know what it's called in your world, but so within the fixed costs, obviously, there's going to be an increase for utilities and services provided to us, whether it's, you know, we're paying what the rate is for electricity or how much insurance has gone up, or those are the things we don't have control over. We have to have insurance. We have to have the lights on and so on and so forth. So I personally understand that there's going to be an increase from 2019 to 2020. And when we were making our budget cut decisions in the springtime, I'm hoping that people were under the understanding of that. So going forward, obviously, there's going to be some increase reflective of the, the hard costs that we have to face. So on top of that, I don't think it would be pertinent to maximize our taxation to the point where we're just going to stick to the 2019 numbers because then you're also going to get into a service crunch in some areas. And so that may be, but I'd also like to look at, you know, what those increases are and then what we have to do on top of that. And not necessarily adding to the status quo of what we had, but if that's what you were offering, I don't need to know how much electricity or water or anything else went up at an overall fixed cost percentage, how much that's gone up is probably the best idea. And, you know, I trust your judgment to have those numbers in line. That's just me. Does that make sense to you? Yeah. All right. I think that's something you were offering. I didn't want to add.
No, that is for sure.
All right. Are we clear on the direction now for administration? Go ahead, Ms. Melanchuk.
That being said, I guess I have one other thought in the whole process and that would be how we want to break it apart to have the conversation so that they're being had before we go into presenting the budget. Just knowing what the service levels are going to be prior to the final preparation for the presentations in early November would be helpful. That being said, also, in my next request, I was going to allude to also that we're talking about, you know, the levy increase or, or the increase in the budget, whatever it should be. There's also some managers and directors that have approached me about, well, if I don't say what I need to provide the service that we've been providing as best as we can provide it, then am I really doing my job? So there's also that context behind it too, and knowing that there's experts in fields going forward, knowing what they're providing properly and what they should be providing in a, maybe better in their, their sense. So there, there's also that context of the conversation to be had on whether or not we want to discuss what the managers and directors think that is best for the service levels, once the service levels are deemed what they're deemed to be by council. So. But that was what I was going to bring up more in my next report, but I brought it up sooner, being that I think that there should be maybe a plan surrounding when each department would be discussed to know where we're going with the level we're of service we're going to provide for the community.
You mean like a service plan?
Yes.
Is that kind of what we're getting at?
Yep.
Because in all honesty, like, okay, I hate to put it out in sports references, but we're kind of losing our referee, right? You're quarterbacking this and you're getting information from, you know, your colleagues. And, you know, part of the job of that delivery is through the CAO to council. And unfortunately, we're, you know, we're going through a little bit of that and I don't want to put more stuff on, on Mr. Greatheads. And allow, you're okay, you got big shoulders. Okay. So anyway, so we're going to want to hear that. I think part of what we've tried to get away from was having too much scrutiny into the whole budget. And if we're getting kind of pulled, and that's how I'm kind of feeling with that, but we do, like Counselor Butler said earlier, like our job is, is, you know, to scrutinize that. So where do we find that fine balance to where, you know, we're, we're wanting to change direction, but we're not getting sucked into old habits and situations where maybe there should be some underlying commitment to looking at. So I like what the mayor said, but, you know, service plans as opposed to to business plans. And does that lie into that? Where you want to go, Ms. Virchell?
Well, maybe, Mr. Chair, what I'd like to do is just talk about breaking this conversation down into a few pieces here. So the document council has is trying to create a budget document at a summary level to have conversations with council on how much each department is funded and what services they provide. Like, we haven't had that at a high level and we know there's some changes coming in the budget. So that, we created that as a way to have that conversation in open council meetings. So that's what the purpose of that is. What we're talking about now is the targets of the total budget that we would insert into that document to start. So what we heard from council is 2019 budget levels. But 2019 budget levels won't give us 2019 service levels because, as the Director of Finance said, at the 2019 budget level, we provided a certain level of service, but insurance was cheaper then. Now insurance is higher. So where does that money come from? Removed from somewhere or is it added on, you know, the cost of labor and the cost of a few other things have gone up and we could summarize those, what she called the hard or fixed costs, so that you could say, here's the 2019 budget, $2019, here's those extras and here's how much it costs to give you the 2019 budget isn't the same amount as it was in 2019. It's actually more. But that certainly won't give us the 2019 level of service for that dollar amount today because what we had proposed in 2019 was a four to 5% increase in order to maintain the 2019 levels of service in 2019. So we're again short about 4% or 5% to provide that level of service. So as, as the Director of Finance just ended with, there's also a layer on top of that, you know, a lot of things have changed and happened in this past year and directors are saying my job as a department director is to provide council with the information to say, this is what it would cost for me to run this department properly. And I'd like a chance to be able to say that too. So how do we enter that conversation into the budget discussions prior to creating these public budget documents that are then presented publicly and then we begin the debates? And then that can extend us well into the spring if we don't step through this properly. So one of the things we were talking about internally is potentially like a workshop day with council on, on the budget, just to start really working through this because we've got perhaps three starting points of the budget and then arguably some way that this document will hopefully assist us in stepping through that. Then we can prepare these documents for the public budget discussions coming in November. But there's a bit of work in between here and there. And so potentially, a workshop day might be the only way, very focused on just that one particular subject matter of preparing some budget format document that we could then bring to the public budget discussions that have 2019 level of budget that council had asked for, 2019 level of budget, plus these extra hard costs that come on top, 2019 level of service, or what the directors would like to be able to ask council to provide. So all of those things coming together, having that conversation, maybe a workshop's the way to do it.
As long as I don't see a vacuum cleaner as a line item. I'm just saying that as a joke. Okay, so having said that, Counselor Jurno has some questions. I just, from what you're describing and what Mayor Ireland alluded to earlier with changing the concept of business plans to service plans, does that fit into what you're requesting? Yeah. So you kind of see that and then, so that's, that's already an easy process. And if, if you can see that, I'm more of a visual guy, so when particularly Mark has gone up and drawn diagrams for us, it really helps me wrap my head around things because there's still a little bit of confusion, I think, in my mind where where there's that little middle area on drilling down. So if we have a workshop, I'm all for it. I'd like to, to help move this along so that we have a better practice going forward. And, you know, we might not get it all right this year and we'll, we'll find some improvements along the way as we have over the years. Like I think our budget process has gotten better over time. So now we're transitioning into something different. So I'm, I'm open to participating in something if that's what the collective wants. Counselors, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What Mr. Virchill described in the initial presentation, I think, is excellent. I think it's a really good step and it's way more than we've had in the past. So I like that idea of starting a benchmark, giving us the fixed costs and working in a committee as opposed to a public meeting to to discuss the priorities between council and administration. I think it's an excellent suggestion and I welcome it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Keller. I mean.
True. You, Chairman Deputy Mayor, to Ms. Melanchuk. So just if we were to say, take the tax level or the 19 budget, right? And that was the baseline to start at. And for the directors, when in the workshop, they could say, okay, at this amount of money, this is the level of service. However, this is what I see my department at, at this level of service. And do you think that would be a way of working through it? So we start, so whether you go up or down in budget, and then for council, we know what happened with a lot of services with COVID, right? So we have an in-depth. And then for council, we can look at, okay, so we cut here, we cut there. We can look and say, well, was our community happy? Was our community not happy? Should that increase user fees? You know what I mean? Like, but it's at least a level to start. Do you think that will be worth trying or that's too much work?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that all the directors and managers are would be prepared to do that. I think so. And if given the opportunity, I would love to lead a workshop and do, do the drawings on the board for Counselor Demote.
Yeah, particularly if they have brackets and stuff now because I get those. Anyway. Yeah, I really liked the conversation. I don't know how excited council is about getting together for a workshop, not for the workshop itself, but adding to another meeting for us in the next little while, but we have to get this done. Our commitment to public meetings at the beginning of November, correct? We're looking at the fifth. So the ninth, okay. So something has to happen in the next couple of weeks. And I don't want to rush things and I don't want to feel scrambled beforehand. But would these things look a little similar to when we had individual budget presentations from each director and kind of I kind of want to get away from the wish list thing and kind of look at, okay, this is what it costs for a department. So how different would that look? I think Mr. Greathead would like to have some input there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that I have exasperated Mrs. Melanchuk a few times with the budget, going back to straight off 2019 service level. Where we're looking at the, and in my view is providing the service, but also protecting the town and liability and risk management. So for an example, where the old Esso station is, we have an 88 hotel, room hotel being proposed for in there, to go in there. And we get the questions from the engineers and the designers and all of the interested parties and shareholders. Can you support an 88-room hotel there? We do not know. We don't have water modeling. We don't know if our water main and sewer main sizes are adequate. I look at, when an email comes across to me, proponents are looking for hard, fast answers that I have to give a go or no-go on. And a lot of those things that we're doing, it, we don't have the data. We don't have the history. We don't have the pre-planning to do it. And especially it's in the utilities world. It's really coming into a crunch because where properties are, a single-family property is being torn down and then that one lot is rezoned and then two eight-plexes go up. So now there's 16 families plugging in a hole that was meant for one family. So as we're infill densification, that is all critical to the utility. So I can just speak to the concern from that point of view.
And you know, and that's good. And if we have to explore getting some proper data for that type of infill and expansion and what we need to do, like, I don't know who we would go out there to hire to do a study or get all those hard facts. Like with the infrastructure that we have, can our pipes handle what's going to come up on in the CG and CA and if I'm getting the numbers right, GC, A, B, and C on the C sites, on the G sites and then with the hotels and, and, you know, lot of increased designations. So when all those things are considered, we don't know what our maximum output or what our, our facilities or infrastructure can handle in that regard. So, you know, we heard a couple of weeks ago on, you know, getting a new centrifuge and things like that for the wastewater treatment plant. We have to plan way further ahead than we're at now in regards to that, but we don't know what those numbers look like regardless. So just on the utility side, that's insane. But how do we tackle that in a budget workshop with all departments?
Mr. Chair, I believe I can come up with something that will facilitate a good conversation in a work. I don't have the answer right now, but I think I can come up with something.
So what kind of timeline here? So we're looking at November 9th, the night of November 9th is our first meeting. So we've got three weeks before we get into that public presentation. So we probably want to have all our ducks in a row a week prior to that. Or at least by the Friday of the 6th.
Um.
I got you.
Would it be helpful to maybe do this, I don't know how Mr. Virchill usually sets up meetings, but maybe through email and see, I don't know if council, if everyone agrees to this type of workshop either because I haven't seen everybody agree to it yet. I know it is a busy time of year and everybody's overwhelmed with all the work that we've all been doing. So I understand that. And I'm just curious because I haven't seen the nods from everyone. So.
Me either. And I've been trying to get that. So I don't know what the consensus is. We're good? You're good for a workshop? Okay. Okay. Oh, I apologize, I just, I, when Natasha or Mrs. Mallon Chuck was speaking and I saw some heads and then other people weren't responding, so I apologize. So I do have a collective nod. Then I think just, yeah, if you can get to us on when you think that might be a good plan, time to plan that. All right. Councillor Butler.
The fact that we have in our calendars since probably this time last year. Evening presentations, public presentations to present the budget doesn't mean that we have to conform to the date. The lot, the one thing we should not do is go to the public with a budget until we have a budget to present to the public. And we're approaching things a little differently, we're trying something new. I think it's just important that we should take the budget or a draft budget to the public when we have a draft budget to take to the public and not shackle ourselves that way. And the other thing I want to say is that the one thing we haven't talked about here and is still in my mind. The primary imperative is that in the end whatever we decide the tax envelope is going to be, it's not going to be as much as administration would like. Or would recommend, I shouldn't say like, would recommend, and it will require some reductions in service, I, I have little doubt of that. And in the current environment with COVID and the great financial strain that is out there and to some extent, I still feel that in the end the taxpayers' tolerance for a tax increase will be the deciding factor here. And that's why from the beginning, say, been suggesting that we start with that. Let's decide at least in a ballpark. Where we think that needs to be, and I think it will make a lot of the remaining conversation flow a little more easily, so I just don't want us to forget that. Because if we go through the service reduction and all of those questions and then come up with a number that is up here and we know darn well that that's not going to fly and we need to be down here. We will have spun our wheels and we're all hoping not to do that.
All right, that's an excellent segue into the next item on the agenda.
Exactly, thank you very much, and as much as we're all fighting for oxygen in here this evening, I'd, I'd like to get things moving along, so do we have a kind of a, an understanding where we need to go with that? Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and I hate to belabor it, but I I would like Mr. Virchill principally from you, I think. An indication of the level of comfort and achievability of administration. If the general target. I hope not a hard target, but if, if the target is the tax requisition. So there are three numbers at play in the budget always, there's, there's the expense, there's the other revenue and the difference is the tax requisition. If we start from the difference and expect you to work backwards to figure out two other numbers, is that possible? Usually we solve for the difference. And it's the byproduct of a budget discussion that looks at services and then subtracts revenue. You've asked for this, you've asked for something at least, but the recommendation is to set a percentage or a dollar amount for a budget increase, not a tax requisition increase, and there is a world of difference. And I, I mean, I, I think I assisted Councillor Butler last week in drafting a motion, so it was clear what's going to be open for discussion next week. But I am not personally convinced that I can support going backwards through a budget, starting with the tax requisition and, and sorting out a budget based on that. If we want to get to eight, we got to eight as a tax requisition in 2019 by going 20 minus 12 equals eight. But 18 minus 10 equals eight too. And that's a lot different, 16 minus eight equals eight. There are so many different ways to get to eight. What comfort level do you have that, that you can meet any expectation of council if you just focus on the end number? If there is an implicit understanding that we get to eight by being as close as we can to 2019 levels for for budget less other revenue, then I, I think you've got some parameters, but unless that's an implicit or maybe an explicit understanding. I think you are left flapping in the wind as you have been in other years, I, I just, I don't see that it necessarily gets you where you need to be and ultimately doesn't get us where we need to be.
So Mr. Chair, through to your worship, I think what we're trying to do is, is I guess come around to kind of what Councillor Butler was just talking about and and where you're, what you're getting at is not necessarily setting exact specific dollar amounts, but so that we're in the general vicinity of, of having the same conversation. So there's a much different conversation that occurs when administration is coming up with what they think they need to operate the department and how much that's going to cost. And entering that information, then coming forward with the business plan around that and preparing for that conversation versus a conversation around what's the dollar amount that council would be comfortable with as the total budget? Which then determines the tax requisition and whatnot. And then that is a much different conversation about what are the things that need to happen and services that either need to be increased or decreased to meet that overall goal. It's just, it's, we end up, the last year, we ended up with that conversation kind of at the, at the end. But we need to have that conversation earlier so that we're not working on a whole bunch of things and numbers and, and expectations that are completely out of line with council, so it's we just know that going into this budget cycle, because there was such a significant change in the budget in 2020 from 2019, that if we don't clarify goals and expectations on both sides of the table early on and get us all in the general ballpark and hopefully use this document that we've presented as a way to communicate the fine tuning of that. We're going to be wildly different in what council's thinking than what administration's thinking, so this is really, it's not an exercise of putting a fine number on that and, and writing it into a piece of granite, it's getting an expectation from council set that this is about what council thinks that dollar amount should be, that they'd be comfortable with supporting going forward, not saying that you would you know, it's not written in granite, but it gives us a target and then we can formulate what that might or might not look like, but back to my earlier comments, directors still would like to be able to talk to council and say, this is what we think we would like in order to provide the level of service we think we should provide as a director that provides the service and still have the opportunity to present that. That's one conversation, but what council has asked for is that 2019 level of service or 2019 budget level, I should say. And like I said, though, that the 2019 budget level won't give you a 2019 level of, of service because the 2019 budget level in order to provide a level of service in 2020 would have been 5% more when we reduced to 12%, you know, then that would be, say, 17, so there's that dollar amount is quite a bit different, so this is just simply to focus the conversation to get us all in the same ball field and work from that number, as Councillor Butler said, whereas council's comfort level might be around and having some realistic conversations around that with that document, so that's, that's really what it is, but what we've asked for is please don't discount the ability for directors to present some things they think we should be looking at too.
Go ahead, thank you very much, Ms. Virchill, go ahead, Councillor McGrath.
Thank you, Councillor or Deputy Mayor de Moda. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm thinking of this correctly, so I'm hoping to get some clarification, but back in the spring when we did make a significant decrease to the budget and to taxation. I, in the back of my mind, I was confident that things would come through that now have come through. So the MOST funding that we went over earlier today and you know, a, a very small but piece of land rent was waived this year. And those numbers to me kind of like pieced together what we took out. And I, I kept thinking like, we're okay because we'll, we'll get this amount of money and the federal government and the provincial government will recognize the situations the municipalities are in and, and I had this level of confidence that we can make up that lost bit to then move forward without such a dramatic impact to the taxpayers and, and we have found out that we're getting a significant amount of operating dollars back. So I'm curious where maybe I'm missing the piece of putting this all together and feeling confident that we can move into 2021 with in fact, pretty solid service levels for the community and the level of service that the community wants and needs with this funding that has been allocated to us to make up for this really dramatic, hard year that everyone has went through. I'm not sure if anyone can shed light on that or if I'm maybe not thinking of it correctly, but I feel very fortunate that we've received this and that that will allow us the buffer to get to where we need to be because of the changes that we made and how dramatic they were.
Well, and yeah, and I think that we already directed or had asked Ms. Mallon Chuck to come back with that with the funding details and how that's going to impact the budget, right? Is that where you're getting it?
I guess I just wanted to say that I, that had crossed my mind and I will want to make sure that I'm asking the right questions ahead of the process to ensure that that's a possibility going into the 2021 year, because we do have that, those first three months, so I will make sure that I'm asking the right questions going into the process of the grant advisors.
Yeah, right. Did you want to add something to that before I go to Councillor Keller? Okay, go ahead.
Also on that with the new grant money and that came in for the aquatic center and the arena where we were using our reserves that we're not using now, where does that fit in and where does the debentures fit in because before the slide and a bunch of stuff is under debenture, but if we got granting for like, and it's not as high as it was, like, where does that all fit into place within the fixed costs coming up?
Deputy Mayor, through to Councillor Keller Happy. The most funding is operational, so that wouldn't be able to assist us in those capital needs, the debenture is set for capital and it has been taken out. I, because of the ICIP grant funding that we've received, we should be, well, I know that we'll be able to reduce the amount that will be going into debenture going forward in the rec project. So that's a good news story. But when it comes down to the capital part, the most was just for operating and I don't, I don't see it where that could fit in necessarily, but when you're speaking of the the amounts to reopen the facilities and whatnot, I see that maybe as being a possibility and I will speak to the grant advisors about that because that is part of restarting and restarting safely and a lot of extra even dollars have been put into the additional cleaning and whatnot, the staffing's needed there, so I see it as being probably something that they will fund, but I want to make sure that everything is in alignment so that my SFE going to them in July will be fully approved, so I'll make sure to ask all those questions.
Including what we can put away, if we can put anything away to reserves? I mean, because there, there will be future implications of you know, what COVID's done for this year and it's going to impact next year and if that funding is there, particularly having that resort municipality component that was added on there, that's going to help you know, fund future initiatives and if that does help us with budgeting for the future, then those things should be considered, I think, anyway, it's good to have that angle. Again, I don't want to add more work to you, but it's, that money was given to us and, or the potential of that 3.3 million, which is quite extensive, we could do a lot of, of work with that and, and provide a little bit of a safety net as well, if possible. Because we need to work towards that too. Councillor McGrath.
That's fairly in line with my next question and my next question is in relation to operating dollars and how they might be seen as, as spent and with this most funding, sorry for calling it most funding, I just don't want to say the full word. We're all aware now that something like a global pandemic can sweep through the world and shut our communities down and that was not in my mind on March 3rd of this year and we've learned so much from this situation. I'm really curious as to how council feels about starting a tax rate stabilization fund. I think it's super necessary for our community and our residents and the sustainability of the community. But in line with what Councillor de Moda was suggesting is, do we have an, an ability to use these operating dollars for a fund such as that? Or to blanket or cushion our reserves so that we're prepared for the next time that we face a devastating event like this?
Tax stabilization fund, I like that. Okay, well, regardless of segues or transitions into next agenda line items. We're approaching two hours of sitting in here. Ms. Mallon Chuck, you wanted to say something?
Uh, sorry, yes, it was just in relation to the recommendation that the mayor had suggested that he had different wording for it last week and I failed to adjust the recommendation as per the percentage or dollar value on the, on the tax requisition. So I think that's a valid change that maybe should be added into the report and I just wanted to acknowledge that. Am I correct in, in that? Sorry. Just want to make sure I have my ducks in a row going forward.
I, I raise it simply to bring it to the attention of, of administration, that the motion that was presented a week ago, a way of notice of motion for decision next week is, I think quite a bit different than the recommendation. And I I'm just curious as to whether administration has really thought about that important change and whether it gets you where you well, I think where we all want to go is, at least from my perspective, is a very integrated approach. Recognizing as Councillor Butler says that there is a limit to the tax endurance of the population, but recognizing also that if you just go with one figure, there's two variables and who knows where you go with those, I, I think you need some amount of guidance either internally or from, from council. Otherwise, again, I, I think it's you're in the dark shooting at a target. But as long as you have that level of comfort, that's it's a different, it's a different motion than what was recommended, substantially different, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm noting that Admin will come back with a revised approach. I had this crazy idea of getting everybody outside for 10 minutes to get some fresh air, because I know it's snowing, but I feel that the air is dead in here. And we've been at this for two hours on top of what we were on top of earlier, so I am going to call for a recess. I know it's probably not desired by some, but I see some of us kind of drifting off and I think that maybe a couple of shots of fresh oxygen will be helpful for us and any other breaks that we need to take, but I'm going to recommend going outside for at least five minutes. Counselor Butler?
What item number are we at?
We've kind of morphed into 8.6 and yeah, no, well, we didn't officially get there, but
I guess what I'm wondering is, have we done 8.7 or have we not done 8.7?
Budget financials. I don't think we have covered that fully, but everything was kind of about morphed into one. Mrs. Malincheck?
That is, has been morphed into my other presentation with the figures. So 8.7 was something that I was going to try to get to this weekend. However, I did not. I worked a lot on it, but I didn't get to the full completed document. So that's, I just did a verbal on it combined with the other presentation. I apologize. I didn't see it listed like that yet.
If you're comfortable sitting with the direction that you have to fulfill all of that information, I'm good with getting out.
I'm completely fine with that if everybody else is.
All right, so I'm gonna, we'll take a recess till 3:30. That'll give a few moments for people that weren't here that where I didn't announce a time back to straggle in. Yeah, exactly, for today. Wanting to shoot us figuratively. Okay, well, thank you. If it's okay, I'd like to revert back into our meeting from recess and call us back to order. If that's the proper terminology. So we've completed all the financial obligations to the greatest, greater extent. We're at 8.8 organizational meeting preparation. Who would like to lead the discussion on that? Mr. Furtow?
Yes, Mr. Chairperson. So there was some conversation around the fact that we have an organizational meeting coming up on October 27th. And a lot of times council sees the documents on October 27th. So the idea was that we would bring this material back today. And that gives us a little more time to prepare the documents. So what you see there is the agenda or the agenda, the council calendar for 2020. And part of the conversation we have, for example, on the 27th is, do you want the meetings on Tuesday? Do you want them at a certain time? Do you want them in a different day of the week, different times? So we will come back and have that, you'll have a calendar that's all prepared on the 27th based on what we think you want, based on what we've done in the past. You know, maybe before we do that, is there anything that you might want different? So we can prepare that calendar to look a little different on the 27th than what you might otherwise get. The committees and boards, the structure, we've included that in here as well. The council deputy appointments, all of that is here. Like we talked about, what we're looking for is maybe expanding the board's appointments by one line because we're going to add another duty. But council committees and boards, we've had some conversations around those earlier this year. Is there any changes other than the fact that we probably are going to add one for the JCHC? Because that chair role will come over to an elected official. So just some of that. So anyways, all the materials here, it will be coming to you in a more finalized format, ready for council to fill in the blanks and with the proposed calendar on the 27th. If council would like to have any conversation today or change anything prior to us preparing the materials, let's do that today.
Let's do that today. Well, can you imagine if we switched our meeting time from morning to afternoon for committee? The whole what that would do to us today, we'd be going into tomorrow for sure. So I would like to see personally the 2020 calendar translated to 2021 with the same kind of setup. And this is just my idea because October, we're going to have an election, right? And I believe it's the second or second week. Third week? Third Monday, sorry. So that'll be around the 9th, well, whatever the 19th is, October 18th. So there you go. And then plus then, so AUMA doesn't factor in until after that. And then, you know, FCM probably stays the same if it's going to be a virtual one this year. Yeah, so we don't have all those knowns. But and then I guess we will just have a better eye on, you know, those holidays as well and how council operates with that. So and and then there's, you know, the concept of sometimes keeping those fifth Tuesdays sacred. So if we have like a an idea what that looks like ahead of time, then I think that'll properly, that could prepare us for some changes. Right now, I'm grateful that the committee, the whole doesn't land on Christmas Eve this year. And then we've got that fifth Tuesday on the 29th of December, which is a little extra time for us to play if we don't have any pending. And hopefully I'm not drawing any energy to that because I don't want, I want to play over the holidays. So that's one thing. So not to drag it on. That's the only thing I would like to see. That's not too much work. Counselor Butler?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would like us to consider once again, I know we've had the conversation and decided not to make the change, but I'd like us to consider once again moving our regular meetings to mornings as well as committee and whole. Not stuck on the idea, but I really feel it would work better. As a rule, I'm not sure that we're honestly achieving what I understood to be the goal of making it more convenient for administration by meeting in the afternoon because we end up going beyond the end of their workday. I realize going through their lunch hour is a problem too. I'm certainly happy to hear administration's view on it, but I think I'd like to have the conversation. And if there isn't, well, to make that change, I'm happy to let go of it. Just honestly not clear why the difference and thank you.
Mr. Furtow, is there an advantage for administration to have an extra half day on the Tuesday?
Mr. Chairperson through the council, I think from administration's perspective, and I guess I defer to the sort of upcoming administration as well. It's municipal government council meetings are typically in many communities held in the evenings after hours. And the fact that Jasper has it during the daytime administration feels is a huge benefit to having it during working hours because it's normally evenings and outside of working hours. And so there's always the conversation with time is better for community members to participate and attend. But from administration's perspective, you know, with the limited actual participation, the use of YouTube now for putting it on, the different ways that people can engage. It really is what works best for council. Anytime during the workday for administration is appreciated by administration. And I don't believe there's any difference between the morning session and the afternoon session in terms of productivity or availability. I think the mornings and the afternoons both work equally as well. From this side of the table, it's really whatever works best for council as well. Because council members, many of them have other commitments, so.
Yeah, I remember some of those commitments before that Furtow guy came along. I remember being able to get up to the ski hill every other week prior to our afternoon meetings, do a couple of runs and it was back in the slacker days. I'm kidding, but no, and sometimes it was, we did take advantage of those situations where we didn't have things lined up in the morning just to, you know, give ourselves a bit of a break because council can be a bit demanding sometimes. And we have been taking up a lot of our days. So sometimes to add an extra meeting like an intergovernmental, because we have an afternoon, doesn't rush us, but I'm open to reviewing Counselor Butler's proposal or point of view. Does anybody have any other input on the designations of or makeups of the boards and committees? Mayor Ireland?
Thank you. I think it's an opportune time to request counselors to consider their assignments to various council boards and committees, corporations and external boards and committees. And let me know whether they would like to be relieved of any particular assignment or continue an assignment, or whether they think that the board or committee is not really doing anything active anyway and need not be continued on our list. That's, that's a subject that's more for discussion at the organizational meeting. But in advance of the meeting, if you can at least get me your indication of where you want to continue or have a change. I've heard from one already and I appreciate that. So for others, let me know what you're thinking. I also wonder, although maybe it's not really necessary, we have for the last six or seven months had representation on the Economic Recovery Task Force, which is somewhat different than the Jasper Partnership Initiative, although the initiative has not met while the Economic Recovery Task Force is continuing. And it may continue into next year. So I just suggest that it might be worth noting that as an additional or different assignment. And just with respect to the calendar, I wonder whether it is worth noting, and perhaps it's premature, but I think we are going to try and fix a date next week to conclude the budget and pass a budget. I know we've discussed December 16th, although we haven't made a final determination. But I think that that's a good thing to do for setting ourselves targets. So I wonder whether for the 2021 calendar, we should pick a date in about mid-December and target that and let the public know that that's when we expect to finally approve a budget. So similar to what we're doing this year. And finally, months ago this year, we abandoned the hope of having a community Christmas party. But it's a tradition that I would like to see us bring back. And I would like, if we're interested to get that on our calendar for next year early, if it has to be canceled at some point, it can be. But it has been an important community event. And if we want to capture the last Friday before Christmas, as we have done in the past, I think we should make that known and make it public right away.
Well, as I said in the past, go ahead, Mr. Furtow.
I'm sorry, you just jumped out for part of that. The habitats open upstairs, so there's people coming and going. I sent a note to Caleb just now while you were talking, and I might have missed this conversation. But next year, being an election year, there'll be this sort of election hand orientation and whatnot. And so I put a lot of work into the last one in terms of how the election, the inauguration, the orientation, how that was structured. And did that work for everybody? Or would you like to see something different? Or like, I just wondered some general feedback in the absence of that, we'll put it in similar. But did anybody have anything that they remember when they went through that? They thought, I wish it was something different.
Go ahead.
One piece of learning that I have found very valuable late in the term was the George Cuff session. I know he is booking, probably already booked for October 2021. And I would see as a new counselor that being valuable early on in your term so that the roles and clarity of roles is known right off the get go.
Counselor Butler?
I was going to suggest as well that I found the orientation session that we, that most of us at least attended in La Combe valuable. But I was thinking that dollar for dollar, I mean, I don't know what that cost overall, but a lot of travel and subsistence and so on, that it would be worth considering having someone come in and do a session just for us. And I came out of the George Cuff session kind of with that view. I wonder if that might be worth looking at. I don't know if it would cost more or less. It is valuable to some extent to sit in a large room with counselors from other areas and so on. But honestly, especially if you're new, I don't know that the value is there compared to maybe having a couple of days of in-house. So that would be one comment, not, I wouldn't even say so far a suggestion, just something to consider.
One thing that I took away, even though I wasn't a new counselor, I got, I got to go to that as a refresher or a course that I hadn't taken before. And what I got out of it was I got to learn some relationships a little earlier and maybe they might have excelled a little faster with counselors that I wasn't too familiar with. Like I got to go out and have dinner with, well, we all went out to dinner one night and I got to sit with Jenna and Sean and their kids, Molly and Finn. So, you know, got that recognition right off the bat, so I know who they are and stuff. So that was really beneficial. I went for a ride around with Mark and with Counselor Jurnau on when we were in La Combe and we went and looked at, you know, what, what ideas that that community had, you know, just loosely driving around or some things that stood out that we could bring to our community. We talked about the arena and all that other stuff. So it was, it was good as far as relationship building. And then I think sometimes being out of town with other counselors is a helpful thing to, as a team building exercise and bringing ideas, fresh ideas back to your community. So there is that, there is a cost to it, but then there's also the value that comes with that. So I kind of have an opposite view. Counselor Keller, happy.
Mr. Furtow, I thought the in-service of all our services was beneficial. When I first came on council four years prior, I didn't have that opportunity. And I think the tour that you put on and the in-services with all the different departments was invaluable the last time that I came on council.
Kate, thank you for that conversation. It's just important to know, like, as we block out, as Mayor Ireland talked about the community Christmas party, just as important to block out a week, a day. You know, that gives us some idea. So when we make the calendar, we'll, we'll block it out appropriately for the next sort of setup so that it's set up for success. So thank you for that.
Speaking of blocking out days, when's your last day in Jasper? Do we know that? Well, when your last day at work is, how does that sound?
Yeah, the 28th, I believe, would be my last day of working. 29th, I'll be driving south, so that 28th is it.
Mayor Ireland?
Just in terms of blocking out time, even anticipating that AUMA and FCM may be virtual conferences again next year. I know that I, I feel that I missed some opportunities this year. And so I am thinking that And so I am thinking that not so much for your work, setting the schedule, but for our work committing to something, it might be beneficial if, if council can commit time and we meet as a council and observe or engage in the process virtually, but as a council. I found that this year, because I hadn't really made proper arrangements and it wasn't the same format, I could not engage and stay in Jasper and do my other job as I wish I would have. That is one of the benefits of going away to conferences is that you're, you're immersed in it. You pay attention because you're there. I found it very challenging to do that when I stayed home. So we don't know yet how that's going to unfold, but if we put it on the calendar, I, I'm just suggesting that as councillors, maybe we think about taking that time off as we would anyway. And even if we have to convene right in this room to watch the proceedings on a screen, it, I think it's, it's very beneficial for council to do that.
Yeah, I very much like that approach. Particularly if, if we're going to engage somebody in hosting some type of event after or at least going out to dinner once as a, as a group, I think that's healthy too. As far as team building goes, but I, as far as getting in, in the sessions and even having exposure to the resolution sessions and things like that, I think is very helpful. And I think I missed out on that too. And it just seemed to come so fast when it came. Councillor McGrath.
When I attended the AUMA virtually this year, that's exactly what other communities did do. They gathered as their council and they had their own little special event and watched it. And I was at home homeschooling my children while participating in the AUMA. So it was an interesting experience this year, but it was, would have been better enjoyed with the company of you guys. Who? I don't, oh, I'm not sure.
All right. I was going to make a Star Trek analogy with the con and getting people on the visual, but I completely lost my train of thought there. Okay, so does anyone else have any thing to add as far as the organizational meeting preparation discussion is concerned? Right. I would like to actually now that we're going to potentially saving money on travel for FCM, that maybe Mayor Ireland's proposal might be a good idea. Like we won't have to ask for permission for councillors to, to go to an extra meeting. And, you know, there will be a cost for us to attend if we're going to claim that as far as our per diem goes to be here. But I would like to entertain that if, if, if those who want to be made available for it to, to attend FCM, if it's going to be virtual, I would like to do that collectively as a group. It's a good learning experience. Okay, so that moves us to agenda item number nine. We're not going to discuss that. We're moving to correspondence and agenda. I'm kidding. Okay. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you. And it's not so much new business, but unfinished business. I just got lost in our earlier discussions. Did we decide to have a workshop? And if we're going to have a workshop, when is it going to be? And if it's going to be soon, is it going to cause us to postpone the ninth and 10th of November dates? I, I don't want to leave this to another meeting to, to firm this up. And I, maybe I missed a resolution, but I, I thought that was all just left hanging.
So thank you. I actually made a list of things to go over to make sure admin was going back with all the direction we talked about. And I had that here. I said planning a workshop to review and service plans. When is it? So that is a
Yeah, Mr. Chairperson through to your worship. What I understood was that I was going to talk to my director team and Natasha and find when everybody would be available, like are not available, prepared for that discussion. And once we know that everybody would be prepared, I'd approach council to find a date that we could then organize to have that. And then as Councillor Butler said, we could start looking at timelines between those meetings and the public budget discussions and decide. But right now, I'm hopeful that the director team would be able to meet sooner than later. I think everybody's pretty close to prepared. Once I confirm that, then I'll come back to council with an email looking for dates. And then we can work from there. If there's a need to adjust, I'd suggest we do that after we decide the timeline of the budget workshop. So that was kind of what I was going to do.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And I apologize. I, I did leave the room to deal with a different issue for a little bit and I might have missed that. So thank you for bringing me up to speed.
Correspondence. We have correspondence item 10.1. I believe that was on our agenda last week from Parks Canada. Is there any discussion on that topic? Okay, so not having any
Sorry, I'm
Sorry, I looked over at you. I didn't see your hand and then I went into
I'm I'm happy to see this coming in front of us while it is difficult in many respects. I believe this letter points to issues that we are obliged to consider. And I will start with a suggestion. I would like to see a question raised in this letter brought back as an RFD request for direction. I, I actually thought maybe that's what we were going to do today. I'm not sorry to see that it didn't happen that way because the agenda was already as long, was already long. You can tell I'm getting tired. There are problems in Jasper with respect to equity and taxation. This letter points toward some or at least one of them, and we have a responsibility to deal with that. The private home accommodation and more broadly, I would say business use of residential premises, commercial use of residential premises is a longstanding irritant in the community because of at least the perception of inequity with respect to housing and as well as taxation. I say perception at least because we've never had any real numbers or information on this. A couple of years ago, I engaged our assessor, Mr. Birdles, in, you know, a fairly, or tried to have a fairly in-depth conversation about assessment of home-based businesses. And frankly, I got nowhere. We're not really in any kind of a consistent and I think meaningful way assessing for commercial use of residential premises. We have a couple of very arbitrary guidelines. And I fear we're not being responsible. And I think we need to deal with it. As I said, it is top of mind all the time in conversations that I have with people in the community. In short, there are businesses operating in this community kind of under the radar. And I don't know because I can't see through to the numbers whether they're being taxed, assessed fairly. And beyond that, the municipality sought and received business licensing authority some years ago. And I'm not convinced that we're exercising that authority fully and responsibly. We do have responsibilities there. I think we just hand out business licenses every year and carry on doing that without honestly having policy level conversations about what authorities go along with the authority to hand out a piece of paper. I think these are really important discussions. I want to see these discussions happen before the end of this term. I think we need to start having those conversations now. I think a very good point is raised in this letter. I know that there's friction and, and, and some dissatisfaction in that it's very easy to get drawn into a conversation about how, how we got where we are. Views that the problem is one maybe created by Parks Canada, but it is a problem in the community. And it's our community. And I think it's time to have that conversation. So I, having seen this come in, in front of us, I wanted to take this as an opportunity to ask fellow councillors that we agree to some first step here today, even if that is just to have this brought forward for full discussion as opposed to only a piece of correspondence. Our view of correspondence like this as a request for consideration. Is this something we are interested in considering? I think we should. And I'd be interested in hearing feedback from other councillors as to the suggestion that we honestly simply bring it back at a future committee, the whole for discussion. I don't have any further agenda here than to see that we have the conversation. I respect we are right in the midst of budget, so it doesn't have to be next week, but it shouldn't wait long. It's that important. Thank you.
Yeah, I have to say that I was kind of interested on the, the approach of the letter. Considering we meet with Parks Canada on a regular basis. And I, I like the fact that at least we have the opportunity to discuss it. And the bandits here. Just give us a couple of seconds here for Councillor Whistler to get settled in. Are you sure you want to grab someone else's microphone or you're okay? Oh, it does. Well, someone was using your microphone. Okay. Welcome back. Thanks for making the trip. So there are four questions directly asked to council within that letter. And like Councillor Butler, we should probably address those. So is there a possibility, sorry, Councillor McGrath, is there a possib- possibility of having that on? Or is there a desire to have that on the next regular meeting agenda to discuss those items? Go ahead, Councillor McGrath.
Well, I'd just like to support Councillor Butler's suggestion that these come before us as prepared questions, that we have an opportunity as the elected officials in the community to prepare our statements and our values, either against or in alignment with the questions that are being asked of us for, by Parks Canada. So I think it's a great opportunity as we don't often have an opportunity to express our stance on these questions and these items that impact our residents on a daily basis. So I'm excited to move through a process in which we can come to a decision or consideration for these questions.
So for next week, would this come as a notice for decision or a request for decision? Well, it'd have to be notice because unless someone wants to wave, I'll go Councillor Journo and Councillor Butler.
I don't think we're ready for a decision. And I don't think, I think that this is, should be discussed in a committee other than the committee of the whole, not, so that's not, should be committees while they're open to the public. Our committee of the whole is essentially an extension of the council meeting. I think this is very dramatic and should be discussed amongst a committee. Do we have a, you know, we have a housing committee, but I, I, I just, just don't want to see this as an agenda and have nobody talking about it. I'd like to start it as a committee meeting so that we can have some, basically some frank discussions on this. Because in an open meeting, people are not going to express themselves the way they should. I, I have some questions, but I'm sure the rest of councillors do, but they'd be pretty hard pressed to bring them out in a public meeting.
Well, just looking through the boards and committees that we've have, I don't know where you would address that conversation under the Community Housing Corporation, but maybe legislative. But this is a big thing and we do generally have our quarterly meetings with Parks Canada. Councillor Butler, Keller MP and then Mayor Ireland.
Well, thank you. I was only going to respond that Deputy Mayor Demoto, you I, I was suggesting that this would come back at committee of the whole. I don't think it's ready to come back at a regular meeting. So that was to your point about should it come back next week? I would see this coming back at committee of the whole, but I respect also Councillor Journo's point. So, but I, I don't think it should come at a regular meeting. We're not anything like ready for decision on this.
That it came back at a committee of the whole.
Mayor.
I support this coming back. Committee of the whole seems appropriate. Whether it's some other committee probably doesn't make a difference. But I think the part, at least of the initial conversation is whether or not Parks Canada, having requested answers to these questions, is prepared to attend such a meeting and engage with us in this. They, they speak in the letter about working together and successfully working together in the past. This is a matter of extreme public importance. I, I don't think that we can pretend that this is a matter that can be dealt with other than in public. And so we're not ready to deal with it today and we might not be ready to deal with it in depth at our first opportunity at a committee of the whole or at another committee of the whole meeting. But I think we should invite Parks Canada to the table and have this discussion in public. I think we owe that to our residents to, to let them know what's happening on, on this issue that affects so many people in our community in, in such a variety of ways. I, I'm glad that we have the letter. I think it's an invitation to work together. I need some real clarity in what some of the questions actually mean. Does council support making changes? Does that mean, do we support Parks Canada making changes? Or does that mean we're going to make some changes on our own? I, I need some real clarity. I think they have to be at the table and I think it has to be a public process.
Councillor Brother.
Having brought it up, I agree. I, I think that's an excellent point.
So are we going to give administration direction to set up an invitation for that discussion? And is that going to happen two weeks from today? Councillor Brother.
We could still bring it for direction in a couple of weeks at committee. And then consider whether we would like to give that direction. Even that might be a question that requires us a little time to discuss. I think we all agree today is not the day. And that was really all I wanted to suggest, to come back and let's have a conversation about next steps. And maybe that's the next step. So that would certainly give me what I'm looking for in this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fertile.
Mr. Chairperson through to council. So October 27th is our, there's a committee of the whole meeting followed by the organizational meeting. So we can bring this back for our FD on the 27th. And just so councils aware, Parks did inquire whether they should be here for presenting or answering questions on this letter. So we had it on the agenda for a week prior. So what I advised Parks is that council first reads all the correspondence. And then if there's a requirement to have some discussion, then I could ask. So there certainly was a willingness from Park's side to represent the letter. So I just want you to be aware of that. So the 27th will bring it back as an RFD. Council can discuss it. And then if at some point in the future beyond that, I think that would be the time Parks would be invited in. But we'll just prepare an RFD for a more fulsome discussion on the 27th and then we'll go from there, whatever council decides. So that'll be how we step through this.
I'm good with that. Thank you, Mr. Furtow. Thank you, Counsel, for making light of the discussion. For the benefit of Mr. Wilson, we're moving on from agenda item 10.1 to 10.2. We have some correspondence on the patio extension project from the people involved with Jasper Brewing Company. Does anyone want to talk about that or defer that discussion or put it as a topic of discussion? The the season has expired and, okay, go ahead, Counselor Keller MP and then General.
My understanding when the season ends and that we have extended it, that we will talk about it. We also wanted some input from our community on how they felt about it. And that's how we were going to look for it at it for next year. And that's kind of what we do with all our pilot projects. And that was my understanding.
All right, I know there's there's going to be some discussion coming forward on storage of of the concrete blocks that some of the businesses use. And and I think privately, they tried to assess approaching the museum and using their unused area. But it's apparently deemed as institutional. So they're having some difficulty because I think the concept was to move all the blocks there for the winter time and then make a donation to the museum. But I've understood that there are some roadblocks in making that happen because it's not deemed as a storage lot or commercial for commercial use. So maybe I'm not sure if our can our administration can help assist in that matter. I know it's a Parks Canada thing, but I really don't understand what the difficulty is there. And I will get some more clarification on it. But I I was told that that might come as part of this discussion going forward. I'm waiting for an official request to see if there's anything that anyone in the community wants counsel to look at. Mr. Mayor Ireland, sorry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demoto. I thought that it was either express or entirely implicit in our decision in the spring to allow an extension of patio seating that we would, in fact, review at the end of the season. So I request for council to open a discussion is simply, I think, a request to do what we said we were going to do anyway. So I think all that remains for us is to confirm that we intend to review how it worked and perhaps set some parameters about how that discussion will unfold. To me, we're not being asked to do anything that we hadn't already committed to do. So I think we we could acknowledge to the letter writers that that's exactly what we intend and then set out our own process for doing that. But it seems to me to be somewhat self-evident that we were going to do it anyway.
Did we get a date on? Do we remember the date when we were going to start reviewing that? Or because this goes to the end of the month, right? And then we I thought it was going to be at the end of October that we were going to discuss the review. Counselor General.
Well, I thought there was some discussion that we would allow the extension, but on seven days' notice when the weather changed and we wanted to do snow removal, that they would have to remove. What happened to that discussion?
Yeah, I think more of the letters referring to having the project go ahead again for next year.
Okay, I didn't.
Counsel McGrath.
Thank you. And I agree with Mayor Ireland where we have already expressed our intention to review this, being that it is around the time that it is fresh in the business's mind, how the season went and learnings and opportunities for next season. I think that the sooner we go through this process of of visiting the success of this program for the summer and the likelihood of it continuing next year should be sooner than later. I would like to start discussions in the near future on some ideas that were floated around a little bit too late in in the spring, early summer for this year, like the revitalization and the potential of the downtown core becoming this vibrant center of the community and not rushing through that decision. So that likely would take the majority of this winter and into the spring to have any idea of what that might look like. And I would go as far as to say, maybe it even needs some capital expenditure associated with it in our 2021 budget. I I feel that there's lots to be discussed and the time is not necessarily now, but it's soon. And we owe it to the businesses to move on that. And maybe we even, as the Chamber of Commerce really helped us through the initiation of this project, maybe even we ask for some assistance from the Chamber of Commerce in assessing how the summer went to the businesses that did use the patios. And and of course, asking the businesses that did not use the patios, how that impacted them as well. So we can be sure that we are looking at this in an equitable lens.
Thank you for those comments, Counsel General.
I I agree that we should, you know, review this. But I thought there was some discussion about getting feedback from the business, this is business community itself. So, you know, seven restaurants used it. But what about the feedback from the business community? Maybe the chamber or the other restaurants or how did they feel about it? I don't think one letter should be adequate for us to be discussing this. I think we should be requesting the business community to either provide a report or make the formal request for this to continue. And I know this, but there was discussion on this, and that's what I would endorse.
Well, seeing is that there might be difficult to have, you know, businesses come down to council or as much as I'd like to invite that, maybe this is an opportunity for another town hall or some other public engagement process. And I guess we got our feet wet on on some of this stuff. But if if we can get out and get the message out that we're going to hold this for you, and this is your meeting to get your your suggestions out, whether it's just business and include local residents to to chime in on on their views. There's an opportunity there. I'm not, I don't want to direct how it would be set up, but we could do something with the chamber again. I I felt that, you know, the the setup of that worked really well. And if we've got more participation, then we can get better feedback and look at what we could do in the future with what we might be faced with parameters. Mayor Ireland.
Some of this work has already commenced, and I I agree, the more information we can get, the better. Certainly the the letter is not necessarily encourages to take a side. It's to open the discussion. The discussion has to include the community. But a couple of weeks ago, a few of us on council at least attended the was called the Business Walk orchestrated by Community Futures West Yellowhead. And I know anecdotally that I received an awful lot of comments from business owners, and I had a stretch along cannot. And the ones that spoke to me were not the operators of patio seating. They were businesses that were impacted. And so I know they have lots to say about it and it's important. But a bunch of that work has already been done, and I I've been waiting to see the results of that business walk from Community Futures West Yellowhead. And I haven't seen it yet, but that's a starting point. We could talk to the chamber and see what feedback they're getting, and we could consult independently with the town hall or some other format with with businesses. But I wouldn't restrict it to any one source at all. And some of the work has already been done.
That's important information to know. And would there be anything coming from the Economic Recovery Task Force? Or was the Community Futures arm of that part of that process? And is that where how we're going to get the feedback?
Community Futures West Yellowhead does sit on the Economic Recovery Task Force, but the Economic Recovery Task Force is not one member. So it may have a view of its own, and it has an upcoming meeting in the next week or so.
All right. Hopefully, that will get discussed. Counselor Keller MP, did you have something to add? I thought your hand was up. Anyone else want to contribute to the discussion? Okay, so is there any desire to to at least put this on the next committee of the whole agenda? I think I I cursed us last week by calling this committee the whole day because that's exactly what it's turned into. So even though I said it again, Mr. Furtow.
Unless council would like to do something different, I guess what I'd like to just offer is that administration was intending to do a review of the program. This letter, as Mayor Ireland had stated, simply just reinforces the fact that that should be done. And as Mr. Gray had just made a note as well as Counselor Keller MP used the term pilot project. That is true. And and there is some, once we do a review with the business community and maybe community at large, then come back to council, have some discussion on council's desire moving forward. One more step will include going back to parks because parks did allow that use. When when we did the sidewalk seating, if you recall, we ran a pilot project. I came back to council with the results of that and then had to make an application to PDUAC for the commercial use of that institutional zone space in order for that to be approved in terms of a a land use that's against. It's not institutional, becomes a commercial use of institutional land. So once that review is done, once council decides if they want to go ahead or not next year, if council does want to go ahead or not, please be aware there probably is another step of somebody having to champion this thing through PDUAC, like I did with the sidewalk seating you see now on the sidewalks. That will be required as well. So there are a few steps ahead. The letter simply does reinforce that one business would like to see us move along on that. But that, you know, we we are planning to do all that.
And you're implanting that information into the interim CEO to pass along. So we don't forget that because that corporate knowledge will be helpful through that process. Counselor Butler.
I'm fine with all of the conversation that's been had. Of course, we're going to review it. And of course, we're going to consider the future. But I'm a little concerned about just one direction. This wasn't really a pilot project. This was a one-off to deal with COVID situation. There's every likelihood that that will be with us again next summer. So a conversation about whether we would re-implement this, what we did this year, next year, to help with the COVID situation is on conversation. A conversation about treating this as a pilot for something on an ongoing basis in the future is certainly related conversation, but it would be a little bit of a different conversation and absolutely would, in that case, require conversations with Parks Canada, as Mr. Fisher just said. So I don't object to either one of those conversations, but they are a little bit separate. I don't want to see sort of this conversation creep from, well, we may need to do this again next year because maybe we'll still be in COVID, to create an understanding that maybe we're talking about doing it permanently. Because I don't know if we're talking about doing it permanently. And I don't think we've even begun that conversation. Or if we were to go have that conversation, what that might look like? Because maybe it wouldn't look like the relatively sort of quick and easy and temporary way that we did it this year. So my only concern is that wording around pilot project. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything to add to this discussion? Okay. Okay, that brings us to agenda item 11, council representation on various boards and upcoming meetings. So do we want to give us a heads up on Counselor Keller MP?
Counselor Wilson, I will be going to Grand Cash on Thursday to attend the Community Futures Board of Directors meeting. Representative from Western Diversification will be there, and we'll be learning about all the new fundings that is coming out to the federal government for businesses within our region.
Thank you for that. Anything else, Chad? Okay. That was quick. Upcoming events. October 13th, which was today. Did well, that's us. October 27th, we have our organizational meeting that's coming up. We've discussed that. And then November 9th and 10th, potential projected public budget presentations after our discussions today, they they might not be hard dates at this moment. So that moves us to agenda item 13. That moves us in camera. This may have a motion for us to do that. Okay. And the time is Counselor Geno motions to go in camera at 4:24. I'll in favor. That's carried.
Just before we continue, is there anybody on Zoom? Thirty? It just it just seems to me that it might be appropriate to let them know that there is almost no chance that we will do anything other than adjourned once we come out of in camera. There's there's no sense. Anybody who's already put in seven hours should call it time well spent and retire for the day.
Thanks for that leadership and I believe we're in camera.